Meeting is called to order. This is a public hearing of the Bar County zoning commission at times five thirty P M. The date is. April third, two thousand twenty five. Location is the first floor conference room in the Bonner County administration building on highway two. Standpoint Idaho. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live via Zoom and YouTube. If you'd like to see here, then be sure to subscribe. Miss future episodes. Please silence your phones, silence mine. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, founded in the early days of the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call. Commissioners from my left, please.
Commissioner Kevin Murka.
Commissioner Clark.
Commissioner Marlowe.
Commissioner Blazer present.
Commissioner Bolson present.
Okay, Commissioner Marlowe is chairing tonight. Is there anyone in attendance in special, in need of special assistance to see here? Just pay. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. These microphones. And ones in the ceiling are not for the room, therefore Zoom and YouTube. So don't expect to hear yourself. If you can't hear me, it's not their fault. It's my fault. So just raise your hand and I'll speak louder. All right, commissioners and staff members, have any changes to the agenda for this hearing?
No.
The last meeting was held March twentieth. Minutes were made available for the commission to review. Does any commissioner or staff member care to correct those minutes?
No.
No.
And this is approved under the consent agenda. For those who may may not be familiar with these public hearings, I'll introduce the process. The gentlemen on my left and right are the county zoning commissioners. We are volunteers. We serve on this commission because we live in Bonner County, love Bonner County. They have family and friends here and I want to stay here. Our job is to be objective as we review zonings and land use applications. We're not employees of the county. We're not politically elected and they're not paid for this service. We review these applications as best we can with support from professionals in the water county planning department and with other county. And state departments. The zoning commission are a quasi judicial body, meaning that we don't make rules here. We follow rules. Our job is to. Look at the county code, the state code and. Follow those rules. This is in contrast to the Bonner County Planning Commission. Which is a separate group of people. They are quasi legislative, meaning that they make many of the rules that we follow here. Staff are the folks on my left, your right. Staff members are employed by the county. They're subject matter experts in the areas of zoning, planning, committing. They spend countless hours helping professionals and DIYers properly plan projects that affect land use. They act as filters as well, ensuring that what comes before this commission is well prepared. Indeed, there are many applications and many requests that never make these public hearings because they can be handled administratively or they're incompatible with code. The public are also present here tonight. The commission solicits public testimony that helps the commission to learn about facts relevant to these files. Facts that may not have been known before this hearing. Do the applicant, their representative, plant department staff. We accept public testimony in written form before these hearings. We appreciate written testimony because it gives us more time to read it. We do prepare before these hearings to. To review the files that were. Were reviewed tonight. We have one file to review tonight. The file is. Additional use permit. Zero zero three zero dash two one. Idaho land LLC RV park remanded. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a twenty unit RV park on four point one seven acres. The property is zone rural product. The project is located off Blackstone Road and Alweldon Road. In section twenty four, hundred fifty four north, range five west, poison radiant. On November fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, the district court vacated the previous approval and remanded the file back to Bonner County before the proceedings. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or expertise communication to disclose about this file?
No.
Anybody live up that road?
No.
I believe it's staff's turn then to present the file tonight. And especially the context of. Remanding. Because I think I, I think I'm the only commissioner that was here the first time that this came.
Jake Valpene director. We have about twenty two public comments that have been received. We have a couple of late comments and it's up to the chair if you want to accept this as part of the record. It hit me after the deadline.
There, we reviewed a ton of comments. Not going to take any more time to read more now. Last minutes.
Please note that Mr. Bill Wilson's on the line as well, given that, as I said, that this is a remand. Which means it's been through court. In this case, it's been through a district court twice and it's been remanded by that district court for the proceedings.
Be a little louder.
He's doing amplify a little bit, so I'll speak up. As I was saying, Mr. Bill Wilson is the county attorney. Given the legality and the kind of judicial side of this, I've asked him to be present to answer any questions that you guys may have. In regards to the district court and your county's response to the court's decision. So. As stated, this is filed C U P, C U P zero zero three zero dash two one. And yes, that that year is accurate. It was applied for back in December of twenty twenty one. Where I expect. So again, this is a remand from the district court and again, the applicant is. I think the chair already read this. At least the first part of it, but the applicant is requesting a condition use permit for a twenty acre, or sorry, a twenty unit RV park. The site is located on the corner of Alweldon Road and Claxton Route Blanchard. Site is approximately four point one seven acres in size and is currently vacant. It was mostly flat with some timber on the east and south side of the property, but the parcel zone. Rule five. Following the court's decision to vacate the B O C C's approval. The applicant has modified the application and removed all references to affordable housing or residential uses in the application. The revised application is now under administrative review by the county, but the zoning commission surveillance the appropriate hearing by. There's a couple of specific legal phrases in that and I'll explain those to you guys. Vacate the decisions and it doesn't mean that the court denied it. What they said is there's some issues with the decision that was previously made and now that 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 approval is no longer valid and it's been sent back to the county for further proceedings. And administrative review. So what that means is it's the review process, not in judicial review. So. The county's process and decision making. So this is the first step. If this is appealed, it's still under administrative review. In that case, it would go to the board of county commissioners. And then if the decision is further challenged, it would go back into judicial review. So the revised application aligns with the RV park definition as a commercially used by removing references to residential occupancy. I'm going to focus the majority of my presentation here on the. The standards of review in response to the court's decision. If the zoning commissioner would like me to go over the specific. Any, any additional details that I don't present, just please let me know near the end and I'll answer the question. This is the site plan. It has not changed since it was first served. There's some, on the chronology side, there's some specific dates just to be aware of. As stated, this was first applied for, I believe it was December of twenty one. It went to the zoning commission in June of twenty one. And then it got appealed to the board of county commissioners in September that same year. That it was approved by the board. There was a building location permit applied for and then later issued. The first district court remand to vacate the previous B O C C approval was August of twenty twenty three. Came back to the board of county commissioners. They have again approved it with some additional findings in November of twenty three. And then last November, so November of twenty four, the district court again vacated that decision. And the applicant was, sorry, the application was later revised by the applicant December and here we are today with the zoning commission. An appendix C of.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
After the August seventeenth vacation, it went back to the border county commissioners. So why is it coming down to the zoning commission this time?
Because the application didn't modify.
Understood.
And again, like I said before, that's specific to removing the, the long term housing and there's a pretty in-depth analysis of that. In comparison to the twelve four nine six appliance, I will get to that. Okay, my presentation. So then it's C of the staff report contains all the previous decision letters to include the two court decisions. There's all the relevant code revision or revised code sections that were cited throughout the staff reports and and reviewed. I pulled in a couple of state statutes as references to try to determine what short term stay would be and those are referenced in the staff reports as well. As far as the background, site specific data, it's fairly unremarkable. It's a corner lot, four point one seven acres, again zoned R five with a land use of rural residential. It's accessed off Clagstone Road and Alswelding. Both roads are Bonner County only maintaining gravel rail. The environmental factors again are pretty remarkable. There's no map slopes, wetlands, frontage on streams or rivers. And it's, it has a floodplain zone of X. For the applicant, the current services are individual well and septic. With fire provided by Spirit Lake Fire District and powered by Illinois Power.
Zone X means. Non floodplain.
Correct. If you, if there were floodplain, I would show it on this map here. A full list of the agencies notified on this file can be found in the penis aid of the staff report. I believe I quoted or copied from B A M all of the, the comments received specifically for this file in response to the revised application in the staff report. And then previously received agency comments were included in appendix B from the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three file. In response to this, we received comments from the Bonner County Marine Bridge Department, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Idaho Department of Fish and Gaming, Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. Bonner County Sheriff's Office and Panhandle Health District. We received one, one reply of no comment from the U S Forest Service. There were several public comments received for the scheduled hearing. I believe I counted twenty two. Two that we received late, which we're not adding to the record. Additionally, public comments received through various. Hearings in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and those are included in your file on the record. I provided those in digital format to the commission for your review. Standards review, so twelve dash three 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 is a commercial use still long. You can see it's. Conditionally permitted in the recre- or the rule, rule, real residential zone. In this case, we're in R five. There are two standards. That have to be met. Do you have notes eight and twenty one? Note twenty one refers over to twelve dash four nine seven, which is a specific standard for not a new park or campground. I'm going to go into depth in the analysis the staff went through in evaluating twelve dash three 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 note eight and then some responses. So note eight. Is a short standard with a lot of implications. So I just noticed something on the last slide.
Yes, sir. There are no zones. There is. Yeah, yeah, twelve crazy three. I was looking at this earlier. There are no zones where. RV parks are permitted without conditions.
Correct. It's only, RV parks and campgrounds are only conditionally permitted in the zones you see it on the screen. There's nothing, there's no zone that is outright permitted. Roger, thanks. And I should say as another separate note, the board of county commissioners directed staff, I want to say it was Tuesday last week. To remove. RV park campgrounds from the rural zone and the act force and I believe they included rural service center. That is a direction to staff to process a code. And if that code hasn't been processed. It's in the works. We're working on that as staff, but given that this. This project was applied for prior to. One, the board requesting that change or that change becoming effective, he's essentially best, not essentially, he's absolutely invested. In the code, invested in the code to date that he applied. So you, we really shouldn't take that into consideration. You're judging the file about the legality of when you apply.
We're operating on the rules as of the date of the application.
Correct. Back to the staff response and the view of twelve dash three 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 note eight. So that specifically says. Adequate water supplies for drinking and fire suppression as well as approval of sewage disposal sites and methods. Are the Panhandle Health District and or state of Idaho must be demonstrated as appropriate. And we've done a review of each one of those phrases and added some conditional approvals for each of those to meet. So analysis of the adequate water supplies for drinking. The water will be supplied by an individual well. The applicant submitted a well delivery report indicating the distance. Of the existing well produces thirty gallons per minute. In addition to the existing well, the applicant has applied for a new well permanent project. The applicant. The application for a new well has been submitted to the Idaho Department of Water Resources. That is on file. The Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. Review the application and determine that the proposal will, the proposed use will qualify as a transient, non community, public water system. What that means is that this is, anytime it hits a specific IDAPA code at the public water system, D E Q then regulates that system that has to be regularly. Tested and those reports sent to D E Q to prove that essentially because no, so many people are going to be drinking on this, it can become a public hazard. If it's not regulated. So when you hit certain benchmarks, that's when you D E Q steps in and says, this is a public water system. We're going to regulate this. The same thing that would happen on a. A restaurant in a rural area that's drawing from a well, that was because you were serving more than twenty five people more than sixty days per year. That's when D E Q gets involved to ensure public health and safety. So D E Q's provided a list of pre-construction requirements the applicant must meet before the water can be served to the public. These include approval of a, of a well location and construction, submission and approval of a facility plan. And engineering report prepared by a license engineer. Approval of final plans and specifications, well pump testing, initial water quality monitoring. There's been a condition of approval added that would address these requirements by D E Q. And again, this is a B condition, which means prior to issuing. So before they could start using this, i- if it were approved as an RV park, you'd have to meet that requirement from D E Q. Onto, we're still in note eight. So analysis of the adequate sewage disposal. Regarding wastewater, the applicants, the application indicates sewage disposal will be provided via drain field. A speculative site evaluation was conducted and submitted by the Panhandle Health District. For the proposed RV park. See the site evaluation of the file. Additionally, applicant has submitted. An. An upgrade application and payment for review of the wastewater system. These are included in the file as well. These materials confirm the applicant is actively coordinating with Panhandle Health District. To ensure compliance. Per PhD's comment, the applicant, the applicant's application for separate facilities have now expired. The application, sorry, the applicant has not contacted Panhandle Health District to provide additional information. Or submit new application regarding the project. PhD addressed concerns of the feasibility. Of a large soil absorption field on the property and a full scope of the product and a full scope of the project. As presented to PhD by the applicant. So all those details are found in the Panhandle Health Department's comment that they provided. I believe it was last week, or the week before. In the event of the, the total projected flow exceeds twenty five hundred gallons per day, the wastewater system may be subject to a review by D E Q as a public wastewater system, depending on P. Ph D determination. That's the benchmark when Panhandle Health and D E Q get involved, looking at similar to a water system becomes a public sewer system with over twenty five hundred dollars per day. In this case, D E Q will require a P E R. Demonstration of technical, financial and material capacity, engineer plans and nutrient pathogen evaluation. Condition of approval has been included to address potential review. And approval of D E Q and or PhD as required by V C R C twelve best three 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 noted.
Have you communicated with Panhandle Health? Like directly on the phone with anything like that?
Not outside of the comment received though. Not in, not regarding this file.
All right. They seem a little bit confused. On the one hand, their public comment that's. That's dated March twenty seventh. Is a little bit dismissive. It doesn't go into a lot of detail, just said this is an LSAS and it's near enough space for it. On the other hand, I see. Where they're working very closely with the landowner. And the math for me works out for. How much space is needed and all of that for, for a. LSAS on good to soil. Your understanding is your summary that there is a working relationship at the moment between. The applicants and Manal.
I, I have what's in the file that you guys have reviewed. So it, it seems to me that the applicant made some progress. And then through the district court, my assumption is a good question for the applicant is that. Rather than move forward and, and construct or continue permitting, wanted to see what the district court would do. Like why, why dump money into a subject system that would later become invalidated by, by district court decision or by the county. So. And it appears that he worked early on with PhD, applied for some permits. We have the response from those, those permits now expire. He would have to, from my understanding, apply again. So if that kind of summarizes the, and again, you can ask the applicants.
So thanks. I should ask the applicant and it's time for that. When we look at this file as a zoning commission representing the county. Do we? Take into consideration whether the septic system is feasible or not, or do we simply? Have this condition that says Panhandle Health District needs to get the P E R, do the right checks and balances. Get a septic system approved and stamped before this is. Turns into an RV park.
So there's, there's two things at play here. One, we don't have enough information from, or D E Q doesn't have enough information from the, or PhD. From the applicant to determine whether or not this is going to require an LSAS. They, they believe it so, right? We look at the comment. That's kind of what they're.
Do I need to even worry if it's going to be an LSAS for our standard system?
Yes. So that's, that's what I'm getting to next. So when we look at twelve dash eight one eight, the definition of a public utility facility. We have a requirement for a conditional use permit when certain criteria are met. And it appears that based on D E Q's review and Panhandle Health review. That it, it's likely to trigger another, a requirement for another conditional use permit for a public utility facility. So we've added a conditional approval. It's a B condition. So prior issuance. That if it's determined by PhD that a, that the flow is over twenty five hundred gallons, then they require to apply for a public utility facility. Given the comment from D E Q regarding the water side, a, a public utility facility is definitely required based on our review.
Okay, that's why that condition is important for this.
Okay, absolutely. So you jump again. I'll, I'll go to the review of the same.
Perfect.
So public, private or community utility facility, including but not limited to station houses, station grounds, pumping station, power subsation, stations, dam structures. Soilways transfer stations, fryer stations. So it goes through all the different types of utilities. And then the ones we're, the ones we're most concerned about are subsurface sewage disposal system serving ten or more residential dwelling, dwelling units or designated. With a capacity more than twenty five hundred gallons per day. Public community water system designated, sorry, designed for fifteen or more regular or connections or regularly served more than twenty five year round residences. So. When you look at the definition of a, of a public utility facility in Bonner County revise code, it appears that. More than fifteen connections is going to, is going to trigger that as a, as a requirement. And then the subsurface sewage is still up for debate or up for review by the relevant agencies. And the way we've crashed with that condition of approval is if it's determined by them, then it's going to be required. I think I've summarized everything within the second paragraph, so I won't have to read it.
Would that LSAS conditional use permit application come through the zoning commission or?
I would bring it back to the zoning commission, given your expertise on the file. Any other questions on the subsurface sewage water before I go to the fire standard? So analysis of the adequate water supplies for fire suppression. So we look at this stand, where water supply is under two different provisions. One is adequate water for drinking. And adequate water, water for fire suppression. So fire protection is provided by Spirit Lake Fire District. There's a letter in the, in the file dated March twenty fifth of this year. Spirit Lake Fire District stated spirit, and this is an abbreviation or just an excerpt from it. Spirit Lake Fire Protection District poses any approvals that allow the applicant to proceed without the appropriate. And required amount of fire flow, spacing setbacks and fire access. In this updated comment, the fire district did not specify a minimum requirement of water supply for fire suppression. In order, in order to adequately address the potential public safety concerns as it relates to fire prevention. The protect and protection, a condition of approval has been added. Requiring. An approval from fire, from Spirit Lake Fire that would require fire standards. Have been satisfied prior to issuing the condition.
One, I love that wording, fire flow. I want lots of fire flows.
Just one of that fires.
Yeah, that's referring to the water.
Two words. One correction in the staff reports. I had uh drafted a, I had not received a comment from Spirit Lake Fire, so I reached out and left a voicemail. There's a comment in here that we we left a voicemail, never heard back from them. I forgot to delete that paragraph, my apologies. We did hear back, so I just kind of striped that from the staff report. Um they didn't call me back, but what they did was email me this comment, and that's what's in the record now. I'm sure. So this this standard was challenged during the prior judicial review. The BOCC decision letter dated November sixth, twenty twenty-three, it's included in the record. This includes a specific finding addressing this standard, and that's finding effect number five. The district court did not reverse its ruling dated on 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 its ruling dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and there's the the case on it. What this is saying is that the the court, when there were two main arguments um that were presented at the last district court um hearing. One is the standard is, is this a long-term residential use or is it a commercial use? And then the other is, what is the the fire flow requirement, right? The court made a ruling on one and ignored the other, saying if you haven't passed bar number one, we're not going to have number two. So what we have is a finding of fact number five from the Board of County Commissioners. It's included in the proposed findings of fact here. Like I say on this last paragraph, and this is not included in staff report, the finding of fact in the previous BOCC decision letter has been included in the staff report as a proposed finding of fact, but it conflicts with the now proposed condition of approval B three, uh which was added to address the recently received comments from the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. So this hearing body needs to review the relevant information and make a determination on this standard. So you have uh a review by the Board of County Commissioners, and now this is the previous Board of County Commissioners, because the majority of them have been replaced with new commissioners. Um and then you have a a new comment from the fire chief. And then you have an old comment from the fire chief. So you have a very good job ahead of you. This is one of the major topics of concern. Again, this wasn't, this was brought up and not addressed by the court at the last proceeding. Any questions on that? So I understand the inconsistency in the staff report. I'm providing all the relevant information, background information, and you guys will have to to make a determination on that finding or craft a new finding, and then whether or not that new condition of approval should be allowed.
Which B condition is it?
Oh, it's yes, B three. Questions on that?
No, so we'll need to pay attention to two comments from the fire district. So the two findings of fact from the BOCC.
So finding of fact number five from the BOCC addressed the previously received, so the twenty twenty-three comment by the fire chief. So the fire chief gave, and the staff report goes into some detail on this, the fire chief gave some potential requirements for fire flow. Um I I tried to reach out to Chief Carpenter. She's now left, I guess they need a new a new fire chief. So if you look at the, this was written by one of the staff members, I believe, the or one of the board members that that provided the fire district um comment. So I I was looking back to see if Chief Carpenter wanted to resubmit that same information to the record and have you guys weigh in on it. Regardless, I think it's still relevant, and it it is an indicator. You see that the BOCC's response in that finding of fact number five. So now we're getting into the analysis of, does this fall under twelve dash four nine six or twelve dash one one seven? So I'll review both of those and give you our our analysis. So Bonner County Vice Code twelve dash four nine six is the RV dwelling unit code. This allows, so the residential use table uh twelve dash three, three, two includes a separate use category for RV dwelling units defined in twelve dash eight oh four as a recreational vehicle using the same manner as a single family dwelling or an accessory dwelling unit. This is essentially a a an additional right that individuals in our property have or individuals in our county have um to have an RV that someone can live in on their property, um family members or otherwise, and they can um it's they can have up to two if you have more than acre or one if you have an acre or less. Okay? This was the argument that was brought for the board, given that or sorry, give uh brought for the court, given that this the the proposal was for twenty long-term residential dwelling units that there was a conflict between is this a residential use or a commercial use? So this is what the analysis uh is trying to to help you guys understand. So the standards of RV dwelling units are detailed in twelve dash one nine six, which clearly established these as long-term housing options intended for use by property owners. This is limited uh to the residential zoning district. The proposal does not uh request approval uh for RV dwellings. Rather, it is a request for an RV park, which is a commercial use defined in twelve dash uh eight, one, eight, as any premises uh designed for the rental or three or more recreational vehicle stalls or spaces. So it's not uh RV dwelling units. What it is, is an RV park. Okay, so RV park or campground, that's twelve dash four nine seven. So in the most recent round of litigation addressing this file, Bonner County attempted to distinguish between the RV dwelling units used for residential purposes. Again, that's twelve or three, three, two, that's our residential use table, and the permanent RVs uh contained within the RV park, twelve dash four nine seven. However, the court rejected the argument. As such, we concluded that the the code we currently uh as currently drafted does not allow for that distinction. Essentially, the code doesn't allow for long-term residential uses inside of an RV park under the commercial use table. What it does allow for is two uh habitable residential RVs on on the property and as contained in twelve dash four nine six and three, three, two, the residential uses.
Okay, it's a residential use if you're going to live there for longer than thirty days. It's a commercial use if you're renting and by the day or the week, you know, maybe you're putting up a tent or an RV or correct, okay?
As a consequence, the only way to harmonize the two sections is to is to impose a limitation of stay requirement on the on new RV parks such that they cannot uh be utilized for long-term residential use. So twelve dash four nine seven does not contain a specific standard or regulation limiting the duration of stay of an RV park occupant. However, because RV parks are listed in the commercial use table and not in the residential use table, a limitation on duration of stay is both appropriate and consistent with the intent of the commercial zoning designation. Other transient lodging uses identified in the uh commercial use table include hotels, hostels, resorts, and retreats, none of which uh are intended for residential occupancy. Nobody intends to live in a hotel, that no one's, it's not, it's not a someone's long-term living arrangement, a hotel or a hostel or resort, right? Those are short-term duration stays. So likewise, an RV park permitted under the commercial zoning, oh sorry, I shouldn't say that, in the commercial um use table should not be used for permanent residential purposes. In the revised application, the applicant indicated the RV park is intended to operate seasonally from March to November, which reflects a transient residential nature of the use. The occupant, or so the applicant, has also removed all references to long-term or affordable housing in the amended application. That was one of the contested facts in the last court decision. Other transient uh uses identified in the commercial use table include a hotel. Not looking at a copy paste device, my apologies. Uh to further support the limitation of duration of stay, I've reviewed Idaho Code sixty-three, eighteen oh three, four, and sixty seven, sixty-five, thirty-nine, providing guidance uh by identifying short-term stays as thirty days or less and affirming the authority of local governments to regulate regulate as such. According accordingly, a limitation of of thirty can uh cumulative days per calendar year per guest is appropriate to preserve the the commercial character of the use and avoid its classification as residential. The conditional approval has been added for file.
I noticed that wording in the, I don't know, you're viewing earlier. So cumulative, meaning that I can't stay for thirty days and then leave for a day, come back for thirty more days, I need to wait till next year. Correct?
That that engages the argument of I moved from stall one to stall five, right? And that that's a concern whenever whenever you're looking at putting these kind of limitations on.
Yeah, good.
So to ensure that uh uh compliance with this thirty-day limitation, the applicant will be required to maintain a guest logbook. The logbook must uh record the names um and a bunch of relevant information regarding the the person's stays, such as license plates, assigned space, generation of occupancy, um and that logbook is the available to Bonner County planning upon request. Uh this record keeper requirement provides accounting with a practical means to verify adherence uh to the transient use standard prevents uh circumvention of the stay limitation by rotating spaces. It also supports uh enforcement of the condition and alliance with the county's uh duty to ensure zoning consistency and public accountability of the land use approvals. If you can think of a different way to try to regulate this, I'm more than happy to entertain any kind of approval. That's what staff came up with.
So if I if I understand that correctly, he has to, or the applicant has to maintain a logbook. Uh you request to see that logbook at some point. What happens if the logbook isn't?
Then then he. Sure, so uh he'd be in violation of this conditional use permit. We would come back to it again. So that's the majority of what I wanted to cover. There's a few other things in here I wanted to go over with you. Um there's a provision in twelve dash two, two, three, the conditional use permits. Um so this is in the overall, so to and I highlighted or underlined a couple of spots there for you to review. So to grant a conditional use permit, the zoning commission must find a proposal that's not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan. That's found in the adoptive implementation. So staff has provided analysis of the proposal against the policy of the comprehensive plan. The final decision rests on the governing body after completion of this public hearing in consideration of relevant oral and written testimony evidence. If you have reviewed the policies of comprehensive plan and find that any of those are inadequate or staff's analysis of it are inadequate, I would say um in your deliberation, bring up what policies are it's in conflict with. Findings of fact uh have not changed since the date the staff report was uh was published. Again, this is that finding of fact number five. This is something you would need to deliberate on and and whether you agree with or modify this in its entirety or or even as whole.
You're referring to the the current staff report.
Correct.
I mean, there's been a few.
Absolutely. This is the twenty twenty-five staff report.
Twenty twenty-five, thank you.
There's been a couple of additional findings of fact that were included with this staff report than weren't in the previous ones. I believe it's eleven through hovering within about three. So I think seventeen.
Was finding of fact number five that long the first time around?
Yes.
It was.
Yeah, okay. So that's what, that's copy paste from your BOCC's. Um yeah. They had they had a significant deliberation on this, and then I believe the fire chief came in person and had a conversation with the board during that period. Okay? That led towards this finding. Condition of approval, um the only conditions of approval that have been removed from this um versus previous decisions by the board, I think there was a an approval for a or a condition that required an encouragement permit. You look at Ruin Bridges' comment, and the encouragement permit's been satisfied. So there's been a um just a couple of review by staff and some removal or modification based on that. Um we've also added a couple of conditions of approval, and then the B conditions are all brand new. So there's your um duration of stay limitation and and condition A ten, and then the logbook requirements and condition A alert.
For the benefit of the public, these A conditions are conditions that need to be met throughout the lifetime of the RV park. The B conditions, that the jury can go over now, have to be met before the issuance of the permit. So these are things that have to be done before a permit is issued if we decide to approve this.
B is before, A is always.
Correct. So before they could simply, the applicant could start using this as its intended purpose, in this case, an RV park, they would have to meet these five D conditions. I have one change requested in condition B five. When I read it over again today, I realized it read that the Bonner County Engineering Department's going to be the one supplying. So I you had one word and a couple of commas, and it changes the whole the whole sentence. So a storm moderation control plan prepared by a licensed engineer shall be submitted to and approved by Bonner County Engineering Department. So please make that change so that we're not obligated to provide this for you. Any additional questions from you? That concludes my presentation.
One more general question, um we probably. Um how many RV parks we have conditionary additional use permits for in Monroe? But at right now.
That's my same question as well. Thank you.
Very good question, Henry. I don't know off the top of my head. So I as part of our review of the proposed or the requested um change, we're going to do an analysis of that and of the tax amendment that the board is asking for, we're going to put the table together. So um I believe that the applicant actually has a public record request in, and I think he's probably going to speak to that as far as the number of RV parks that have been committed. I want to say somewhere around half a dozen. Um whether, what zones specifically those are in, I don't know. I actually have CUPs mapped, and I can probably find that answer for you as I say. Um get back to you guys.
Yeah, there was a public record request, like response in here that I couldn't tell you what the question was. That must be it.
Hmm, I don't know.
Okay.
Anything else?
No more questions to the record? Okay, thank you, sir. Is the applicant or their representative present? Yes, introduce yourself, Mike Plum, please.
I'm Steven Dodie, representing Idaho Land. So I brought I brought some logbooks. So so the six other RV parks right there, right there. My RV park. Okay, so that's six years of law. This is two hundred fifty years of US law, and then this is the four thousand years that that was built up for. So there's a memorial on the other side of the wall to this book. The three pieces of art on the other side of the wall represent this book, the two granite slabs outside the courthouse in Wallace honor this book. And this is the foundation. They stacked this way. So four thousand years, two hundred fifty years, so my six years of uh history. So I might give a little brief rundown of of the story of my story. Um and I think the old history is important to have here. Okay, so I don't know where to start. It's hard to know where to start. Should I start with the septic permits? Sure, let's start with the septic permits. Panhandle Health, let's just go down the list. I looked the word up in a Webster's, it's it's defined, and I'm going to show, and I think the word's shenanigans. Um so here's the the receipt for payments for both of my RV RV permits. I've already had them stamped. I've been offering them to you. I paid fifty dollars to extend both permits. And then they responded me the money. There's the payment, fifty dollars until my trip is. The re- the receipt for payment. Uh both my septic permits.
You had that established.
Those have been, those have been. These have been stamped. So here's the email. I received Panhandle Health expiration date. So my my permit will expire April first and June thirtieth, if I don't pay to have them extended fifty dollars when they receive this.
Is that twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, I received this in twenty twenty-five. I paid both permits. I gave them money. Money was sent back to my card. I received emails saying, hey, we're going to uh even though we sent you an approval that it's extended to five, one, twenty-five, uh we're going to, everybody start sending your money back and boycott both your permits. Um the twenty-five hundred gallons a day, that was resolved years ago. This is the new site plan for the septic. Um with nineteen spots, we easily resolve that because with twenty spots, we were one gallon over the twenty-five hundred gallons with all twenty spots. Now, as you point out, the code does not require utilities. The RV park code does not require utilities. So and that's been, that's been once, we went over this like a zillion times. The code does not require utilities. I do not have to provide these utilities. But if I do, I need to meet the standards, and we've went over this over the last, you know.
By that, you mean these could be dry spots.
Yeah, absolutely. Code does not require utilities.
Yeah.
Except one.
The Panhandle would approve that nineteen spot.
So you all looked through all emails. Let's go over it. So these are copies of them for you guys. This is the site plan for Panhandle Health. I mean, here's some stacks of emails between them, between us. Um hey, finally ready to submit my letter of intent, which that yeah, so so they claim in this staff report that um we did not receive a clear letter of intent. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we need an intent for you so that they know what.
Yeah.
Review, I'm coming.
Hey, I'm finally ready to submit my letter for intent and the operation maintenance monitoring plan. Uh I dropped it to nineteen spots to make it simpler. These are lots of emails. Go over this. Here's uh our intent is to build nineteen paths.
So that's your question about the nineteen?
Yeah. Yeah.
So twenty spots, ten hundred twenty five gallons, that's twenty five hundred gallons amount that.
Exactly.
Yes, the need for the LSAS, right? So doesn't matter to me. I don't think whether you feel the LSAS or not.
Yeah.
If if you want to put in septic, you've got to go through Panhandle Health and view if it's an LSAS. So I haven't seen anything to show that Panhandle Health has like declined an application.
Correct.
Just some communication problems between perhaps you and Panhandle Health, which I have also experienced with Panhandle. So I don't and that's not really my my purview here. So do we have any questions specifically about septic at this point? So, okay, let me explain the LSAS problem. If you're going to generate more than twenty five hundred gallons per day.
Twenty five gallons per day.
If you're generating more than twenty five hundred gallons per day, then you you need a bigger system that's engineered. It's called a large something.
Soil.
Systems, okay.
Scale or soil.
Soil, there you go. If you stay below twenty five hundred, then you don't have to do that. You can install a normal system or regular system. At twenty spots, each spot needs a hundred and twenty five gallons per day.
For RV.
For RV spot, so twenty times hundred twenty five is twenty five hundred gallons. So he just removed one spot, so down to nineteen, and now he doesn't have to do the LSAS. It doesn't matter because we have a B condition that says if an LSAS is needed, then you're going to have to go. Hit the building location for that. If he wants to put in a septic system, you've got to go Panhandle Health District for that. So I don't have any questions about septic at this point. Who do you?
I don't think so. I think my only question would be on the application uh he's he's applying with Panhandle Health with nineteen spaces, but on our application, it's twenty spaces.
That is a discrepancy. So and there was some talk earlier about eighteen spaces in application at Panhandle. So what's going on with that?
So it was nine.
So I'm.
Of approval or two different applications. It was nine and nine, right? Yeah, that's where you got the eighteen.
Do I remember that earlier in two thousand twenty two, it was going to be eighteen wet spots and two dry spots? Something like that.
I I could have suggested that, but there's also uh an existing subject on the property. Um but I bought this property. This was a junkyard. I was trying to improve the community. I spent all of twenty. Well. Yeah, anyhow, I cleaned up a junkyard and demoed the house to make room for this project. And bought a junkyard to find like literally the worst property I could find, the ugliest property I could find to bring value to the community, to cleaning up a property and turn it into a productive asset for the community.
Who do you?
Um.
We're talking about the discrepancy between the eighteen or nineteen or twenty spaces.
Okay, so um and I've talked this over with staff over the years. There's no problem with them. I've always been approved for the twenty spots. I meet the code for the twenty spots. That's never been argued. So I'm approved for twenty spots. Um it it doesn't really make a difference if I complete that. I could build out one, I could build out ten, I could build out twenty. Um if now if I'm going to provide septic, um I can only provide septic potentially to nineteen. So at this point, it's just like, okay, fair enough. I'll only put in nineteen spots. It doesn't, it's not going to kill me. Okay. So, yeah, they don't need to conflict. I can I'm approved for twenty. I may or may not build a little twenty.
You're approved for twenty with the with the planning department or you.
Yes.
This this is an application to build twenty spots with the application with the uh county. You're going to go to Panhandle Health District and view separately for the septic. And maybe that ends up being one of the spots.
And our condition covers that.
Yes.
Regardless on how many bills.
Yes.
For second.
And and Milton pointed out um at previous meetings years ago, like it's really he he kept. So so the first time I was in this room was twenty nineteen because I had researched all of the law here in Bonner County for building RV parks. And then at the end of nineteen, I think it was the end of nineteen, it's been a while. At the end of nineteen, they decided to revise all their code. So I just learned all their code. And then they decided to revise it. So I came in here. I think I was sitting right about where you are right there in twenty nineteen. There was some other uh guy in a suit up here and a woman back here with two screaming kids. Three of us in the room in twenty nineteen, and I spent hours listening to everyone come together, talk about how to revise the code. And um after leaving that room, when I was walking out the door, Milton was asked who I was. I said, I just want to build an RV park here, just curious about the codes. And then my response was I can see you guys are all working together synergistically. I'm sure you'll do a great job. I offered two comments, but said, I'm sure you guys will do a great job at coming up with codes for us to build RV parks. Way to go. And I left twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty, I studied all that code. I sold my lake property to fund this project. I in twenty twenty one, I finally find the right project to do this. So I have the funding. I have all the codes memorized. I I I am I spent about a year looking for the right property that will meet all of the RV park code. So I find the right property in the middle of the pandemic, offer well above asking price to get a property because I know it meets every qualification. So I offer way above asking price in one of the hottest markets to buy a junkyard because I want to bring the most amount of value to this to this situation. I want to start at the worst and build it up. So I so, okay, that's twenty twenty one. I apply for my permit at the end of twenty twenty one, and I've been coming back to these meetings uh every six months sunset. But so forgive me if I'm a little frustrated. It's been six years of me pouring pouring a lot of money into this project and um and like I pointed out, here's the approval of my six competitors in that same timeframe. This is the approval of them. Are they limited to thirty days? Are they? I mean, that's their letters. That's all six of them.
Yeah, I get it.
So, yeah, there's my request for records. There's a whole lot of one, two, three.
So in this.
So there's their site plan.
Sir, in the in the in the timeframe that you've been starting to see better, there's said six have been approved.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, so you you want to see their site plans? It's just uh.
Yeah, then you're.
You want to take a look at some of the rest of the plans? So and now actually, can I point this out? That's a little on that topic. Although, I mean, this is my initial plan I drew out in twenty twenty one. I mean, it doesn't mean I stopped there. My building permit has all of the engineered plans. My actual building permit I've already been approved for has all the engineer plans. You know how much these papers cost? These papers cost a bit for me. So there's all the engineer, the stormwater plan. I don't know why we're still talking about this. This is approved. This is actually part of the stormwater plan. The whole grade for the whole project. It's not like the other parks don't do that, but mine did it. Um there's the whole stormwater plan for the whole park. And it's actually already approved. This is already approved on my building permit. So I've been approved through this system multiple times, filed my building permit, started building, built built my driveways already, and now I'm back here again. And that's why, that's why um anyhow, I didn't even finish the septic first, but you don't.
I I don't think. Yeah, I think we're good on. Yeah, yeah, no, I don't.
Okay, because I could go over all the emails where they said everything looks great. You should have your prints by the end of the week, all those emails. And now somehow my permits are gone. They evaporated. Not for a taste, but.
Commissioner, do you have any other specific questions for the applicant? So I I think we'll have a lot more far after all the comments and then the the after and staff will often contribute. And so that might be a more productive time to engage in dialogue.
Okay, can I continue on some other topics?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Um. So, okay, there's the Panhandle Health.
And let's structure our time a little bit. What what topics are you going to cover? So like, we're doing here.
Okay. Limitation of state.
Okay.
This is uh not negotiable for me.
I'm 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 going to come back to that then. Give me a couple more topics that you're going to get to keep everybody on track.
Um I'll briefly touch on housing versus RV parks. Okay, um but primarily focus on duration of stay.
Okay.
And some other laws surrounding that.
Okay, anything else that you want to do before you're to like comment?
Uh I don't lose it.
Okay, go ahead then.
So imagine a hamburger place trying to open up in Court Lane where they said you had to document everyone that bought a hamburger. And every individual that came in to buy a hamburger was only allowed a half day window per week to buy a hamburger. That's essentially the same ratio that's being imposed here, a one twelfth of the year. Um now I've already dropped. So when 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 this started, I met the code. Milton in specifically did not put a time uh dur- uh timeline on how long you can stay in an RV park. And they went around the circle debating that, and they decided to not put a length of stay in the code intentionally. I mean, I was, it was anyone else at that meeting? I'm probably the only one that was at the meeting when the code was written. Okay, so Milton specifically and everyone else there decided it's not a good idea to put a duration of stay. And at that same hearing, they removed the previous duration of stay, which was, I think, three months for non-RV parks. There was a three month, if I remember correctly, three and six month, three or three or six month duration of stay for temporary stay in an RV at your buddy's house, and they removed that. They removed that uh term that stay limit, said, we don't enforce this type of stuff. This is not a good idea to have a time limit. It's hard to enforce such a thing. We're not going to put that in our code. So they removed that and said temporary stay. So one section of code time limits were removed back in twenty nineteen, and they intentionally were not added to the whole RV code per code. The idea that you're going to have to monitor how many people are coming and going from the RV park, keep records of that, and then turn away a customer trying to do a transaction with you. I mean, the concept, like, that's why I go back to this book. The concept of free trade, the constitution, these 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 fair trade things, like the the ability for somebody to interact business. It's one thing to have some codes about safety and structuring. Um. It's one thing to have a bunch of codes and make an evil even playing field for everyone. It's another thing to try to impose a thirty days of time limit and get right in the middle of a a of a a business and their customer. That's a bad road to go down that I could show. I mean, it really gets back to the heart of the Fourteenth Amendment of our constitution. Um. You know, I love the the pledge of allegiance. I was thinking about it. Uh we pledged the allegiance when you're all in here and I was thinking about Lady Liberty and said it's liberty and justice for all, right? We all know Lady Liberty standing, holding the torch. Do we know Lady Justice? It's a woman holding uh a scale, wearing a blindfold. She's wearing a blindfold, so she so she's just holding a scale. So that it's a cool, Google it, Lady Justice. We all know Lady Liberty, but we pledge allegiance to this justice. And I want some justice in this situation. I just want a fair shot. If my competitors do not have to uh report every transaction, keep a logbook and then turn customers away. How is that fair if I have to keep a logbook and turn customers away?
Sorry, how does how does the condition force you to turn the customers away?
If somebody wants to do business with my RV park and they stay there for thirty days, and at the end, they say, I would like to do more business with you. And I say, I would love to do more business with you too. We have a mutual agreement. We would love to do business. Unfortunately, my park singled out and I can no longer do business with you.
Do you do you know just offhand what percentage of of tenants would stay longer than thirty days, just generally for RV parks versus shorter than thirty days?
Um, I don't know if I have any response to that, but I I specifically now changed and restructured my whole design to be a seasonal park. It was year round. So a lot of so, you know, a lot of the problems uh arose from me writing poorly writing my initial plan and using bad phrasing. Okay, and I offered to take that out back in twenty twenty two. I offered upstairs in the room upstairs. I said, hey, I'm happy to go back through this and take that all this language that's that talks about having giving people a place to stay. Um fundamentally, I was trying to serve the most amount of people and fundamentally al- also like my park was was my plan was to sponsor a kid from every spot in this park. I've been sponsoring a kid in Kenya since I was seventeen. Now I have eight kids I'm sponsoring in Kenya. And my plan was each part, each spot in this park was going to sponsor another kid in Kenya. Uh so like my my goal is to serve most amount of people. Build something that can serve the most amount of people in the most synergistic way possible. Um it's a it's a I'm um I'm out there trying to do good. I spent my summer, I did spend it on my lake property that I sold to buy this junkyard. I spent my property my my summer hauling trash, fifty thousand pounds of trash off this property to clean it up. I uh there's a there's an old story in this in this old book um where this there's this sower out sowing seeds. And some seeds fall in good soil. These pesky crows keep following them, eating some of the seeds. And and then there's and then he there's a second part of that story where after his long day of sowing and he goes home to sleep after sowing, um an evil one comes and runs through his field with a bag of weed seeds, throwing out handfuls of weed seeds everywhere he's just trying to sow a crop. It's an interesting old story.
Of of your competitors, if I could ask, how many of those, I think you mentioned six uh competitors, are seasonal versus year round?
Um.
Just off the top of your head.
I am not sure. I do not think time constraints are those of it.
I have another follow up question, but okay. Out of the six, do any of these other six have a limitation of stay in those on them?
Not that I'm aware. Not that I'm aware.
Were you able to find that out?
I I I I have to say, I read through them all fairly quickly. Um if I missed something, I did not see that. I looked, I was looking for that and I couldn't find it.
I think yours is most of that.
So sort of along the same line.
Let's go ahead.
Would you be, is there, is that something that we can find out?
I don't believe we impose a duration of stay limitation on our.
I don't remember.
So, oh, no, not a problem. Um so here's another sort of tack at it, and you don't have to answer it, but how so? This was the planning department's sort of attempt at.
Yes.
Verifying uh transients. How would you? How would you do it? Is is just your your month's time period that you have in your original? Is that your your sort of bottom line on verifying transients here, or do you have some other ideas about how you might?
Yes, sir. Okay, so dropping it from a year round park to a seasonal park cuts my income down by twenty five percent. Take it out about three uh months of winter. Okay, I dropped my income by about twenty five percent. Imposing this thing would be with each individual client dropping my income down to eight percent. Uh not, no, dropping it to eight percent, seven or eight percent. So taking off three months of winter and making sure and making sure nobody gets too settled in the park. Every fall, everyone has to leave. It's seasonal. Now, some people might stay a few weeks. Some people want to stay a few months. Some people might want to stay all season. But everyone has to go at the end of the year, right? It's a seasonal park. Everyone has to go. And I think that's the safest, easiest to enforce, cleanest cut, and that also would be something that I don't think is imposed on any of my competitors. So that's something I voluntarily said, okay, I see that this is becoming an issue with how people are approaching this, trying to attack this. I will voluntarily turn this into a seasonal park. Voluntarily. So I did that, taking twenty five percent of my revenue. This other method could take something like ninety two percent of my revenue. If I have a if I have twenty customers want to interact with me uh for one month, one twelfth of a year, that that cuts ninety two percent of my revenue. So now I have to go find new customers.
I think those numbers are a little optimistic. Can I just can I just bring your attention, though, to like? You don't have to keep track of every car that comes and goes. Somebody somebody comes in and rents a spot from you. You're going to write that down somewhere because you're putting everything in grid books or whatever. Um I don't think that's a burden. I don't I don't think it's a burden to when somebody shows up and you say, hey, here's the form, license plate number, name, phone number. Put that in your box of paperwork and and now if the county ever comes knocks on the door, you just show them to read a little box of paperwork. Like, you should have that information anyways. Nobody's asking you to to write down every single license plate number that comes and goes. I need you to appreciate that it's not that big of a burden. I also need you to appreciate the huge amount of work that's gone into threading the needle after this has been to the district court twice. So that we can find an avenue that might work for you. Like, I get that you've been treated unfairly because six other applications have made it through and no problems. That's not fine. It's not okay. I I I do totally get that. But I'm not going to like just send this back through the same process by saying, I just scratched a ten and an eleven. That would be stupid of you. Because it would put you in a situation where you're going back to the district court. The 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 board kind of commissioners wouldn't even approve. Because it would put you in a situation where you're going back to the district court, the, the, the board of county commissioners wouldn't even approve, can you see how I'm trying to be pragmatic with you here?
Yes, unfortunately, it would, it would. In my opinion, it forced me to have to start feeling. We ran through five years of other people are feeling, it forced me to have to start feeling.
You might need to do that. It's not fair, I get it, but. What we're trying to do here is very pragmatic, given the history of those spots.
Yeah, so, um, to comment on your statement. The keeping the logbook, I understand how that could. Be tolerated and, and it's the training away to customer. That's. The, you can't swallow that.
Don't tell me that you're gonna lose ninety two percent of revenue because of that, because not everybody would stay for a full year.
Correct.
Twenty people aren't gonna knock on your door tomorrow and ask to stay for a full year. Like two will. The rest of them are gonna be there for a day or a week. Or a month, right?
So, so worst case scenario, he's gonna have to find twenty new tenants every month.
Yes, which is not hard. Based on what I've heard from RV park owners over the last two years in Bonner County.
It's a major cost factor. I mean. It's a major cost factor.
It's clearly not as easy as just having twenty tenants, you know, for, for seven or eight months out of the year. But definitely not, uh.
I. I mean, in my opinion, as I've structured now for a nine month window. I highly doubt what people would say nine months, the majority of people. So if you open, it's gonna take a few months to get people coming in the spring. Uh, you, they can't stay there in the winter. So people are gonna start like ditching out uh, earlier as soon as they can find a spot that they're going. So in my opinion. A nine month window really is pushing it down to about six months with the amounts of people like.
Is this an RV park or is it a portable housing?
No, it's absolutely an RV park, but I've interviewed a ton of RV park owners, I know how RV parks are ran. And almost every RV park is ran, they offer nightly stays, weekly stays and monthly stays, this is universal, this is universal. Uh, I mean, some parks will designate half their spots for nightly stays and half their spots for monthly stays. And so. That's how parks are ran, mine has absolutely distinguished that it's not affordable living because it's only open part of the year. It's not. It's not a housing project, it's only open part of the year, this is seasonal, it's absolutely seasonal. And that seems like a great way to. Uh, enforce something. Rather than complicating and inconveniencing people each month, imagine how many people.
The director went to like state code to find precedence for what does temporary mean? So that he could set you up for success, so that this hearing wouldn't be a waste of time. Like he was looking for a definition in code somewhere rather than just pulling something out of a hat, right? So, so thirty days was supposed to be pragmatic, I get that it's not fair. If I approve this, if I, if I vote to approve this, this conditional use permit without that thirty days. The whole problem that we're doing this again, the whole problem of the remanding just goes back through another cycle.
Um. I would hope not, the cross, the project needs the codes. So I mean, I would hope not.
That, that is the question though, is, is there any other way? To have this removed, this thirty day uh, stay removed. And have it not get remanded back to the courts.
I don't.
The director was very clear about how hard it works to figure out a way for this work and the fact is, is the code is ambiguous between. What was it, an RV park? Head sites. Versus.
Residential.
Residential.
Residential or. Yeah, mobile home park or whatever, right, the code has to be ambiguous there. And so the board of county commissioners is aware of that, planning department is aware of that, they're working on the background, in the meantime, we get to deal with that and you are present, right? And so how do we go back through the system? And the way that, that the director proposed to do that, I think was very pragmatic, was to say, hey, let's just use. Let's go right to the Idaho code, so the judge sees that. Yes, here's something that, that defines what temporary means.
Is there a way for us to? Sort of build in a, like, if that ambiguity is going to be resolved, which it sounds like it is. Is there a way for us to, to build in something like? Either an expiration date or like a condition. You know, and if we're, if we're gonna approve this with the required thirty day stay. Is there a way to say that that could change potentially based on?
I think I need to, I think you guys are getting some deliberation for later.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need to.
Yeah, sorry.
Um.
I think I thoroughly understand, though, the.
Yeah, let's, let's save some deliberation later, yeah, totally, I get it, yeah.
Profitability standpoint, from a needs of. Uh, abuse standpoint, it, it makes the most sense what you're saying, don't disagree in either way with that.
Um, I, I mean, at a bare minimum. Telling somebody. I mean. At a bare minimum, forcing somebody to move spots. Uh, it's still making sure it's not.
It's the same thing, I mean, yeah. It's gonna go through the same system, that's, that, that technicalities can get pounced on by the same people that, that brought up the civil court. Right? Like, we have to follow the rules and we're gonna do best we can to do that, I need you to finish your presentation so we can get on the public. Uh, comments, public testimony?
Yes, sir. Uh. I will, uh. Point out that I do have, I'm completely signed off by the fire district on this project. Um, it's, that's part of my permit. Uh, she signed off years ago, she specifically handled in the evenings. Water storage facilities, that's part that, uh, and that's gonna pelt repeatedly through these different hearings. That sign off, she's uh, completely signed off by the fire chief. Uh, she might be offering some different opinions now, my BLP was signed off on years ago. And this has been the same runaround, uh, if you knew the number of departments. Who have. Changed their opinion. Um. In the last several years. And tried to go back on everything you told me. It's very frustrating. Um, for multiple departments to make my permits evaporate and send me my money back and say, we won't extend stuff. And I still have one, uh, one more month to go into their email on the, on my septic systems. I still have till the first of next month to extend my septic, I already tried and my money is sent back to me. Um. So if you take it back to the thirteenth. So the constitution, I'm not the only one in here that can recite the, the, the Declaration of Independence and the whole ten commandments. Both law books, I'm probably the only one that really can do that, I've been obsessed, I listen to one book a week. And that's a bit over fifty books this year. And I've been doing that for fifteen years, I love history, I love seeing, I love seeing law. Uh. We have something, the Declaration of Independence.
Is there anything else about this file that you can present this time so we can go to the next phase?
Fourteenth amendment. Yipwo versus Hopkins. Went to the Supreme Court on the same issue. Uh, um, it was in eighteen eighty six, where they were incorrectly using. Uh, at that point, it was fire district codes to punish a specific group of people and would not approve. Fire uh, uh, code, um, sign offs. In eighteen, in San Francisco. Uh, for a specific group of laundry mats to target people. And it went to the Supreme Court, so the thirteenth amendment freed slaves, the fourteenth amendment. Gave them the right to be US citizens. And equalized the playing field and it also tried to create an equal set of law for everyone, equal law for everyone. Equal rights for everyone, that's the premise of the arts on the other side of that wall. Equal rights for everyone, and this went to the Supreme Court. Um. Yipwo versus Hopkins, Supreme Court decision. And, um, the court ruled that, um. It's, it's wrong to target businesses. Specific people to, you know, you, you withholding permits. It's, it creates an unfair system and it's a, it's. Uh, that laundry mat facility fell into the same category of racial discrimination. Um. Because it's that deep of an issue. Do we target individuals and create extra headaches on them? Do you, do we, you stand for the principle of justice? Or do you? Or do you not stand for the principle of justice? You stand for arbitrary, um, imposing the will of the mob. More or less, do we, do we stand for mob justice or do we stand for a blindfolded person holding a scale? Thank you.
Removing the public testimony portion of this meeting. The rules of public testimony are speak from the microphone at the rostrum, sorry, get the microphone here in the front. Speak louder, Thursday, we can all understand you, so the people at home. And our future selves can understand you, be sure to state your name at the beginning, I want you to know your address, I want you to know where you live, just your name. The time limit is three minutes per testimony, any public testimony may receive three extra minutes and no more from any other person who has signed up to share public testimony for a total of no more. Than six minutes. Comments will be limited to the specifics of this file, if any public testimony agrees with the, with the previously shared public testimony. Please show your respect for everyone's time and simply state that you agree with that testimony. Personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position are not allowed. Flapping cheering or booing is not allowed, remember that this hearing is being shared live via the internet and is being recorded for public viewing later. The chair opens the hearing of public testimony, before this hearing, we did receive some public comments, if you had a chance to review. And we have people that have signed up for public, to do a shared public testimony, verbal excitement, spread news, engagement. I'm going to start with. Start at the top then. Uh, is Dennis Walker present?
Yes.
Hey, Quan, I'm gonna use a timer right here for your reference.
My name is Dennis Walker, I think I'm gonna, I wanted to read my, my comment and I'm gonna go over three minutes, my wife has offered to give me her three.
All right, your name is Jean Walker? Jeanette Walker, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
On March the twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, Bonner County Sheriff Darryl Wheeler. Sent a letter to the Bonner County Planning Department wherein he stated his opposition to CUP zero zero three zero dash twenty one. In that letter, Sheriff Wheeler states. Bonner County Sheriff's Office, Office would like to express concern and opposition to approving the proposed CUP application. On this nonconforming four point one seven acre parcel that is located in a rural five zone. Which zone only allows one dwelling. Unit per five acre density, he then states later. The density of twenty RVs on less than five acres in a rural area exacerbates the intensity of danger and hazards both to the occupants of those RVs. And to the residents on the adjacent parcels. One safety issue to note is that there are no sidewalks along the gravel roadways. Which will experience increased pedestrian, including children. Bicycle, RV, vehicle and animal traffic. If there is an emergency requiring a response from law enforcement, fire and or medical services, the fallout may be intensified because of the response time and the lack of. And or poor. Uh, po- poor or damaged infrastructure. The health, welfare and safety of visitors. And our residents staying or living in or around RV parks is far better served by placing those facilities in zones. With close proximity, proximity to emergency infrastructure, e.g. Fire hydrants, paved roads and emergency services. Uh, unquote, these are my words now. The proposed RV park is located at the intersection of Clackstone Road and Al's Welding Road. At that location, both roads are relatively narrow with no sidewalks and no shoulders. With a potential of over eighty people residing at the RV park at the same time. On barely four acres, it is reasonable to assume that many of them will be walking, jogging, bicycling. Dirt biking and four wheeling on the adjacent roads, creating a hazard for traffic as well as the RV park residents and the R five zoned residents. On page eighteen of the staff report, it states. To grant the conditional use permit, the zoning commission must find out that the proposal is not in conflict. With the policies of the comprehensive plan as found in the adopted implementation component. And that the proposed use will neither create a hazard nor be dangerous to the persons on or adjacent to the property. Aside from the inclusion of Sheriff Wheeler's letter on page seven of the staff report, I could find no other mention of it anywhere else in the report. Sheriff Wheeler was first elected in two thousand and eight and has served as the Bonner County Sheriff for seventeen years. That much experience surely qualifies him as an expert at identifying dangers and hazards. I hope the planning department does not intend to ignore the sheriff's warning about the hazard and dangers of allowing such a high density RV park. To be approved at that particular inappropriate location. Approving this application could subsequently expose Bonner County to costly litigation. Especially if an injured party were to discover that the county approved his application. While ignoring the warning given to it by the county's highly experienced sheriff. I think the, the threat of litigation is a, is a definite real concern in this case. Uh, I don't know if anybody, if any of you got, you already said that you weren't familiar with the area. Clackstone Road uh, crosses Al's Welding Road and that's where the triangle, the, the blue area, there it is. Uh, Clackstone at the best of times is nothing more than a dirt road with a handful of gravel in the size, it's a dirt road basically. In the wet season and after the, the winter thaw, you should have seen the potholes on that, on that road, there were thousands, not hundreds, thousands, some were pretty deep. And, uh, uh, like I said, there's no shoulder, so relatively narrow road, no shoulder, there's no way to put sidewalks on that road, it's a dirt road. The, the, the roadway needs to be for traffic, two cars can pass each other safely, that's about it, no place for people to be walking. Along the road, so people are gonna wind up walking on Clackstone, walking on Al's Welding, right in the middle of the course, because you could have eighty people at once cooped up on four acres. You think they're gonna just uh, sit on those four acres, they're gonna get out and do an exploring? There's supposed to be uh, RVs, right, not for living long, long durations, they're supposed to be for showing up for, for a few weeks and enjoying the area recreationally. By the way, uh, if you do know that area, there's nothing recreational about it, it's not a recreation zone. The, the closest body of water where you could take out a canoe is, is over five miles away. It's, it's not, it's not recreational, it's strictly a residential area, all the property around there is residential, five acre. Uh, minimum. His isn't even compliant with that, it's four point one seven acres, real crap, you're gonna have twenty RVs there, potentially more than eighty people. Very high density and, uh, aside from the fact that it's permitted. I think you, you, you can consider the fact, even though it, it's under, under the old code, it's permitted for him to, to have it there in a rural area. I don't think that prevents you guys from considering the fairness of that though. You can consider other things besides just the fact, well, the code allows it, so let's do it, no. There, these people here, there, there's been more throughout this whole process, there were a lot more at the start. And, and uh, we, we like our rural life, you know, we wanna keep living in a rural area. Uh, like we have been without having uh, a high density RV park and now the sheriff agrees. That at that particular location, that's gonna be a danger and he used the word, I think, dangerous or maybe even hazard, okay? The comprehensive code says you cannot give him a permit. If it's gonna result in the creation of a, of a hazard or danger. Okay, Sheriff Wheeler has stated that that will be the case. So you comprehend, if, if you follow the comprehensive plan and it's true, it requires that, then it's a no brainer, you have to deny it. Uh, and at this point, I don't think it's even been discussed anywhere, I don't know if the, if the planning director had discussions with Sheriff Wheeler's comment or not. But I think it should be discussed and if it's not decided here. Then at some point in the future, very likely, you know, somebody might get hurt out there because it's gonna be real crowded, you know, dirt biking here in place, uh, what, just by six minutes, huh?
Priscilla Emmett present? Hello, my name is Priscilla Emmett, I'm a, I'm a Bonner County resident and adjacent property owner to the CUP. In order to perform your duty and responsibility to ensure life, safety. And welfare, you must deny this application. We have experienced four fires in the last five years and probably some we don't know about and have all been. And they have all been started by personal negligence. Every one of these fires required additional assistance from other fire districts and personal firefighting equipment. Deployed by homeowners. We homeowners in this area are well aware of the fire department response times that. That is at least thirty minutes. This is a rural residential area filled with homes and farm animals, no city services exist in the area. To prevent catastrophe. Catastrophic, sorry, damage in the event of a fire, the impact of this RV park will create hazardous conditions to life and safety. For me personally, my property and. for me personally, my property and my farm animals. This CUP creates high risk to my family and I and the safety of all other adjacent properties. This. The safety of, oh, sorry. This CUP should be denied because it is not in alignment with Bonner County Code twelve-dash-two-two-three. The application states the RV park will not impact other properties. This is false. The application states that the tree line will offer coverage to protect protect adjacent properties from noise, light pollution. That statement is false also because the tree line is very sparse. Vehicles can be viewed passing through this property from Al's Welding Road to Clagstone in multiple locations. The additional traffic will also create a huge burden and impact this area. The applicant does not have the right to harm other property owners for his own commercial use or gain in rural residential areas in this rural residential area. By denying the application, application. By denying the application, the applicant's rights are not being denied, but if this is approved, my rights as a property owner will be denied. In recent comment by the planning staff, they correctly identified RV parks and campgrounds as highly impactful. RV parks and campgrounds need to be, remain only in high-density zones, which is in direct alignment with the comprehensive plan. I would also like to state that this, this property was not a dump. It was a single-family dwelling. It had a mobile home on it, which he burnt down, which we all had to smell whatever it was in it. And it was not a commercial property and it was not a dump. It looks like that now, but um, it wasn't a dump site and there's surrounding homes that are million-dollar homes, so this isn't an area for a dump site. Nor was it. So that was false. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. And Josh, are you Priscilla?
Yeah.
Did you wanna talk?
Yeah. Josh Emmett, Bonner County resident and adjacent landowner, just to the south. So, you know, just to touch on the fires, you know, that's a big deal because we know how long the fire department takes to get out there. If any one of those campers that are proposed in his, in his application were to catch fire, they would probably, the whole park probably engulf within about twenty minutes or thirty minutes. Especially with propane and that much propane on site. There's a large concern for that. We know how long it takes them to get out there. It was a single-family home on that parcel. Uh, the state RV maximum for RV parks is two weeks, not thirty days. I don't believe that there is a thirty-day stay in the state for the state RV parks.
RV parks owned by the state?
Mm-hmm, oh, it's correct. It's two weeks maximum, not thirty days. So I request that this CUP be denied. It's not profitable for him. Even if he has to cut it back to two weeks, but it's not thirty days. This site altogether is not the right site. It is too dense to have that many RVs on that small amount of acreage, less than five acres. Four, you know, under four and a quarter acres. It's really small. It's gonna create a big impact to all of our, to all of us, our neighbors, our animals. And we want you to deny it. And you wanna talk about Lady Justice? Lady Justice means you put an RV park next to your own home and then you deal with the fallout of all of its repercussions. Not putting it against who people you say you love and you support by quoting scripture. Okay? I love you and I pray for you. But don't come against your own people trying to profit off of them. Our loss would be your gain. You just remember that. Thank you. I would like to remand my time to Mary. Were you gonna speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But just note that fourteen days stay is fourteen days per day. You can leave for a day, come back, it's state.
Uh, Lee Bonan.
Okay, if I use the podium to talk and prepare the moments?
Sure.
Thank you.
I want it in our decent for the record. And I have one for you for the commission.
And I have a three-minute donor back there.
What's your name? What's your name, Brad? Thank you.
Picture of the character.
Uh, Dave Thomas, on the record, Bonner County. Title twelve, two-twenty-three specifies that to grant a CUP, you must find adequate evidence showing that the proposal is not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan. And not or and. That the use will neither create a hazard nor be dangerous to the persons on or adjacent property. This project does not meet either of those requirements. I'm gonna quote from the staff report. Quoting, "The fire district calculated the necessary fire flow using three recognized resources." Uh, they determined that two-fifty GPM for an hour is sufficient. Recommended that onsite water supply fifteen hundred gallons with two-hundred-and-fifty GPM fire pump hydrant connection. Still quoting, "This standard was challenged during the prior judicial review of VOCC's decision letter in November six-twenty-three included a specific finding addressing this standard, which, according to the staff report, the district court did not reverse in its ruling dated November fifth of twenty-four." Here's the deal. The court does not reverse decisions. It either upholds them or it vacates. This court vacated the VOCC's decision twice. Here we are again. Here's what staff failed to include in the court's rulings. Quoting from the court's decision letter, "The issues before the court on this petition are largely the same as they were in the original case, whether the board made adequate factual findings regarding the application of county ordinances and whether there are facts on the record showing that there is adequate water available for fire protection." Because the board failed to establish through finding of fact or reason statement which ordinance is applicable, this court will not decide whether the board's analysis was sufficient. Their saying is because they were trying to have it both ways, residential for some aspects and commercial for others, and they have two different standards for fire. This is commercial and it, it has to meet the standard for adequate water, uh, fire flow, fire waterfall. Going on from the court's decision, "Petitioners have shown board's written finding of facts and conclusions of law are insufficient under item oh-six-seven-six-five-three-five." Regarding the adequate water for fire protection, Chief De Bernardi, when this first came to him, stated in his agency's comment, May twenty, twenty-twenty-two, "We require wildland mitigation and defensible space if the park will be adjacent to forest and timberland." He also said, "There is no water supply for firefighting in this remote area." Chief Carpenter later required fifteen hundred gallons storage and a two-fifty gallons, uh, per minute pump. Public comment, the purpose of public comment is to provide information that can only come from people with local knowledge or subject matter expertise. There was a plethora of valuable factual information supported for this case by a number of commenters. It's very telling that the director chose not to include any of in his staff report. Why would that be? I'm guessing because they all put good information on why this should be denied. This staff report fills in blanks that the applicant failed to address. It ignores impacts and it makes unsubstantiated statements, which is exactly what caused the court to vacate the last two decisions. Stating something as a fact does not make it so. Staff repeatedly remarked that the proposal does not appear to be in conflict with the complaint policy. This apparently done on behalf of the applicant who filed an incomplete application. The qualifier does not appear renders these statements pointless. Under complaint of natural resources, here's what staff said. Agricultural uses exist on the land and are anticipated to be maintained. Look up there. No way are there gonna be agricultural uses on, on this parcel of four acres with twenty RVs that are associated buildings, trees, required services. This is a blatant also to favor the applicant. The applicant states that glares, orders, fumes, vibrations, et cetera, are virtually nonexistent, will not likely ever affect surrounding properties or residents of the park. Seriously, folks? Twenty RVs on four acres? He goes on to say that only one property directly borders the park, allowing homes to be distant from the park and blocked by trees. He says there are no significant hazards or dangers to surrounding properties. But there are seven adjacent parcels. They received notice because it is assumed there will be impacts. And I'd ask you to look at the handout. Look at the tree barrier there that he claims is gonna prevent the noises that aren't gonna happen. Traffic and fire are two obvious hazards. See the sheriff and fire comments. Noise, light disturbances are all present, present considerable, present, sorry, considerable negative impact. Submitted photos show the trees the applicant claims will provide a barrier to the noise, light, and glare that he also claims will not occur. Roden Bridge is planning to remove fif- trees fifteen feet in from the roadway on Al's Welding Road for drainage inches. Most of the barrier trees are in what Fission Game and Spirit Lake Fire both advise should be a defensible space against fire, but instead they're gonna provide fuel for a fire. It is simply not possible to assign conditions that will mitigate or eliminate the substantial impacts this RV park would create. And for all these reasons and the many more I submitted in my written comments on March twenty-third, I asked that you follow the law, deny this project. I also wanna state that, uh, in the staff report, it says fire protection is adequate based on the absence of state statutes for RV parks. Uh, the state fire commissioner, or sorry, fire marshal would disagree with that. Uh, the county seems to have a position that we aren't, that we don't have a fire code here. We are subordinate to the state fire code and they certainly do have rules about RV parks, which contain structures and have a required fire flow. Thank you.
Mr. Bonan? I have a question. Go ahead. You have a second for a question?
All right.
Yes.
That's all right. If, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Yeah, in the, in the staff report, it sounds like you read it fairly closely, so I'm gonna ask. There's a B-three condition. It says the applicant shall provide documentation from Spirit Lake Fire Department that fire flow spacing setbacks and fire access standards have been satisfied. Are you, does that give you some assurance that he's, the applicant needs to do that before they get issued this CUP?
It does, but it lacks specifics and it's been stated that the, uh, Chief Carpenter, and I have a copy of that too, she, the, this, there's a lot that goes into the fire. If I, I would wish, if I had more time, I would go deep dive into it. Chief Carpenter, in her initial couple of days on the job, when she hadn't become the chief yet, she was, she was getting, transitioning into under Bernardi. Mistakenly said, "No water required for a building location permit, no system required." She regretted that. It came up. It's in the court documents. It came up in the remand hearing. And she said, "I, I made a mistake." And then she did also, in your handout here, is her analysis. Her state fire code, which is the international fire code, uh, of what the water flow should be. And she cut a lot of slack and said, "Well, we're willing to live with two-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute." But what's in this, in your conditions here, don't go to that. They're not very specific, so I, I have concerns that the, and, and Spirit Lake Fire doesn't have a chief right now. So they're kinda struggling between their board and their captains to try to figure out how to deal with this. They've, I know that they've reached out to South Creek Fire Department advice on this, but that's a little bit up in the air. Uh, so I do have concerns. Does that answer?
Yeah. Yeah, I did, I did have a question. Go ahead. Uh, but I did wanna, um, make a statement on the record that, uh, and then just for everybody in the audience, we, we did receive as commissioners, I think the, the director and staff did a great job of making sure that all of the comments that were in, by the deadlines, were, were provided. Yeah. So, as well as the documents that were referenced for, uh, on, on the fire side. All right, Christian, your thoughts?
Um, I don't need to speak, sir. Priscilla, Josh, and Dave, but I don't have anything to add to what they've already said.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pauls. Uh, Maria, sorry, Marcia Stevens.
Good evenings. Sandy's Marling is gonna give me her three minutes.
Thank you, Sandy's.
So I brought copies. I wasn't sure if this could get posted up there, but I brought a copy of you.
You gotta give it to the staff.
We have a copy. I may have a copy. Because I'm gonna talk to this, and I just wanted to make this easier for him, because I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure. My name is Marcia Stevens and I also live in Bonner County. Much has been discussed over the past couple of years about the concerns related to the building of this campground in a rural area. For me to expound on them would be redundant. I am here today to discuss a different topic, one that has been severely overlooked. The design of this campground under Bonner County twelve-dash-four-nine-seven describes the requirements for a campground. This application does not meet several of these requirements, but I'm going to focus on the size of the sites and the parking. Before I start, I wanna say that I've been camping for nearly four decades and I have been in hundreds of campgrounds throughout this country. Next, now look at the design, that, or the design. I have prepared for you a scaled drawing depiction of the applicant's draw, of the applicant's drawing. The applicant proposes a twenty-foot by fifty-foot, one hundred, or one-thousand-square-foot gravel pad for RV and vehicle parking. Adjacent to that pad is a ten-foot by fifty-foot strip that will act as the buffer between each site. The applicant represents that the parking of the vehicle is next to the RV, not in front, which is typical. The code also requires two visitor parking spaces because he's got twenty sites and there are none. I have placed a thirty-two-foot RV on the site in the location depicted on the drawing. I have also placed a vehicle where the applicant proposing parking as well as a vehicle in front of the RV. This drawing of the RV and vehicle represents my, my motorhome and my tow vehicle. As you can see, neither parking spots are acceptable as there's no room for anything or even any space between the vehicles. I don't have a large vehicle. I just have a Jeep Cherokee. But most travel trailers and fifth wheels are pulled by a minimum of a three-quarter ton truck, in some cases one quarter, so one-ton truck. I have the public comments that I did some more research that staff has. Recreational vehicles can be up to forty-five feet long. They are generally eight to eight-and-a-half feet wide. A Ford F-two-fifty is almost twenty feet long and nine foot wide. Just the math alone tells you this will never work. An eight-foot-wide RV plus a nine-foot-wide truck equals seventeen of those twenty feet. This is a, this is glaring evidence that this eliminates countless RVs from even fitting into these spaces. If one was to park in the buffer zone, this would violate the ten-foot requirement and would also cause a lot of problems between sites with people being in such, uh, close proximity. This is fundamentally flawed and it will impact the safety of all concerned. So what does this mean? Vehicles will be forced to park on the street or on Clagstone or Al's Welding Road. This violates the twenty-foot-wide unobstructed road requirement for both Bonner County and the international fire codes. This is a critical aspect to why this design is a local building, creates many hazards. I will just focus on the most dangerous and potentially app, uh, impactful issue in the area. Like everyone else, it's, it's fire. The severe shortage of parking and the ability to make unobstructed roads severely hinders the ability to respond to a fire. Should it incur, the increases likelihood that will, fire will spread. And as Priscilla said, we have experienced some, um, fires in our area. And one time I was loaded up and ready to evacuate. So if they're in, these are on homes on five acres, and so I can't imagine what would happen if a fire would occur in a campground. This just cannot work and we don't need a campground um, in a rural residence, residential area, and certainly don't need to build a campground debacle. Since I have a, a couple of, um, extra minutes, I just wanna comment, um, that my belief is the two things in the staff report are incorrect. That it says that it's a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot site. It is not. It is eighteen-hundred square foot, which is, because it's, uh, thirty by fifty. Right? That's, or fifteen-hundred, I'm sorry, fifteen-hundred. The twenty-seven-hundred square foot that they got off of this man's drawing, it's on Clagstone and it shows some buffer, and it was a ninety-foot section, and they said all the site for that size. That is not true, and most of that stuff is, is the sparse trees that are around. The other thing the staff report says is there's four parking spaces per site, so there's eighty parking spaces. That also is not true. Where is the parking in that? I think what they did is they took this site and divided it by four or something and said there's four parking spaces. My rig, my, I could not get my rig on that site, and I only have a thirty-two-foot motorhome. My rig, my, I could not get my rig on that site and I only have a thirty two foot motorhome. So I I just wanted to bring this to the attention. I did bring it up in the twenty twenty two um hearing that we had that was not really paid it looked at. But twenty sites, even if you were to approve this, twenty sites will not fit in that. Look at the drawing. And you can see that you cannot get between these vehicles. And and there's um and and I put the drawing pretty much where he did in the back corner. Nobody ever parks in the back corner of a park of a of a campground, of campsite. So. This is just fundamentally flawed and it will not work and cars will be forced to be out on the roads. And I don't even know if you can legally park on Clagstone and Al's Welding, it's a dirt road. So this is a humongous hazard. So I urge you, strongly urge you to deny this.
I I had a question for you. If that, if you don't mind.
No, I'm sure.
Uh, you seem like an expert in camping. You've been camping for thirty years. You said.
Four, four decades.
Forty years without math and hundreds of different campgrounds you visited. Um, and your main concern was fire. Have you, while you're staying in a campground, seen or or had, do these catch on fire often? I'm just trying to quantify this from someone that's been in a lot.
Yeah, I I focused, I focused on the fire because that is my biggest concern. The question, you, have I actually seen a fire in the campground?
In these hundreds of campgrounds.
I have not, but I have seen remnants of a fire that when I was not there. I have been in some campgrounds where I could not, I couldn't even, I have a slide that's two feet. And which is kind of short for camp for motorhomes. I've been in campgrounds that are so tight, I can't even pull my two foot slide out.
Yeah, I understand the space concern. I was specifically wondering, in that experience, it doesn't sound like you've ever had a.
I've never.
Seen an RV catch fire in a campground.
I have not seen RV, but I have seen remnant, I've seen evidence that something had happened.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Marcia. Well, Karen Kelly. Where I'm here.
I agree with everything and I'm gonna give her my twenty.
Thank you, Diane.
Good job, Diane.
Hi, my name is Karen Kelly and I'm a Bonner County resident. For those of you hearing this permit request for the first time. Um, interpretation of zoning and ordinances are kind of challenging to the general republic. So I appreciate you listening to myself and others as we exercise the only choice we have or the only opportunity to speak regarding this file. I'm concerned that the commercial use table uh standard eight. I don't think there's substantial evidence in the staff report that the objective is met. Approval has not been given by required agencies. And the staff report to me doesn't confirm adequate water for fire. The requirements are of number eight. Are requirements that must be met first before approval of this conditional use permit. I feel upfront approval is reasonable and it's critical to prevent harm to the health and safety and welfare of all county residents. Um, my next concern is the performance standards for all uses twelve dash four two one. Um, the staff report has a comment that the application was reviewed against these standards and no special requests were made. This is totally inadequate. No substantial evidence that the impacts of noise, of dust, of music, of vibrations. Of light glare, fire hazards, fumes and the increased cost of road maintenance were even considered. And RV parks and campgrounds twelve four ninety seven, um, there's no reason, the staff report doesn't include any restriction, but I can assure you that the public. Does not wish to see a convenience store on this property, which is included in that four nine seven, so. Um, you're provided state law defining a thirty day length of stay for short term rentals and an outline. Of a new costly process logbook review by the planning department. Enforcement is not a forte of this county and you know it. Inventing the process to try to fit a round peg into a square hole just cannot be justified. Finally, I wanna address address two of the implementation components of our comprehensive plan. Where I feel this application conflicts. One is under land use. Our policy wording there says evaluation of suitability should be based. On the availability of urban services, adequate access to hard service surface publicly maintained roads. And other factors that may impact the surrounding community. This application will not have urban services. It will not have access to hard surface roads. And will impact the surrounding community. As I've already outlined for you that it doesn't meet the performance standards for all uses twelve four two one. The overarching public input demand in the community design component is the desire to preserve our cherished rural character. The that component's policy wording is new development should be located in areas with similar densities and compatible uses. The adverse impacts of new development on adjacent areas should be minimized. Clearly, neither policy is met with this proposed project. Your decision today must protect the health and safety and welfare of all citizens. You have to avoid further litigation and this decision has very little to do with length of stay. You cannot mitigate unenforceable conditions and avoid adverse impacts to surrounding residents. Mister Doty is not precluded from using the land as allowed under the rural residential guidelines. But granting a commit, a conditional use permit for an RV port park just isn't supported by the evidence on the record. I request denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, Gary, last name, I can't read. Okay.
My name is Gary Fowler. I'm a commissioner with Spare Lake Fire Protection District. I've been there approximately forty two months. So just about one hundred years.
Okay.
Uh, chief carpenter was due, I think, at the time of the initial application and may have made a mistake. Is my understanding that decision was vacated completely and we're starting that process over. My background is not fire and I'm. My background is law enforcement, so I I can't really speak to current fire codes and what is required other than to default to the state code. The things that I can say, uh, recently there was a fire on Al's Welding Road. I'm sure many of the people here are aware of that. And it was a sizable structured fire. Uh, I did see in the application, uh, I think the initial that, well, you don't need to have water. Every agency has a tender. And there's mutual laid agreements. Well, that is true. There are agreements with everyone. On this particular fire, the Timberlake uh tender took an hour to get there. They were weren't in quarters and I think they had to roll from Bayview or their personnel did go back, change equipment up and come out. Uh, our tender was not there because our fire crew was first on scene. And to get to that particular location, you're looking at at least a twenty minute response. Any additional tenders from Athol, uh Rathdrum, that's fourteen to seventeen miles. These are heavy, you know, big rigs. It's gonna take forty minutes or more. To get additional water resources there. And if you start going through all that water, then you have to start ferrying tenders back and forth to resupply. So. That's really all I can say in regards to this.
Uh, Mr. Fowler, what was your role at the fire district?
I'm a fire commissioner.
A fire commissioner. So you're like this job that I have on zoning commission? Are you like a full time paid slot?
No, we are not full time. We're volunteers. We do get a stipend per per meeting.
Okay. So when we put a condition in this proposed uh commercial use permit that the fire district sign off on. Fire safety for this particular uh. Project. It's not a requirement that you approve it. It's a requirement that you review it and report it to the the property owner after this meeting was concluded. It sounds like there's been a bit of a communication lapse between. I'm gonna be honest, the whole time I've been on this commission, three, three years, there have been communication problems with every fire district. Usually we get no response to our request for comment from fire districts. So is this something that you guys are working on? Like is is somebody, maybe the commission needs to come together and and. Look at each of these requests for for comments when they come through and what can you tell me about what's going on in the fire department?
Well, I don't know if I can give you really much information. We did talk to other districts to help. Come up with some kind of response that we gave you. Uh, we hope to have a fire chief possibly within the next thirty days.
Is there someone in the fire district that's going to? Do a good job, subject matter experts, when you do a good job and review the fire safety of this project and work with the the property owner to. Come up with a plan or deny it or whatever.
We would have to, if it has to be done quickly, it would have to be outsourced to.
I don't think we have a timeline.
Yeah.
There's, there's no deadline here. It's just like, no, there's no deadline, repeat edition, so.
Well, if we have a chief within a month, then we would have someone that would be able to respond to that.
Okay, so.
In the meantime, the only thing we could do would be to ask, you know, for other fire chiefs in.
So there's not a, I mean. There must be somebody that's full time right now on in the district?
We have three fire captains.
Okay.
Three chefs, three captains.
And and are they able to review fire safety standards?
Some, but maybe not to this degree that which this one would require.
Okay, so you're looking.
They don't never, they they, that is not a normal part of their job.
Okay, so you'd like a chief to do that because a chief.
Should have that expertise.
Has that depth, like administrative type of depth rather than just tactical depth? Is that that what I'm hearing?
Yes, and our staffing is basically, we have three, three shifts of three. If somebody's on vacation, I'm gonna respond to this fire with two people potentially. And if we are on a call, that means. The response is gonna come from uh Athol or Rathdrum and you're looking at an extended time. So. There's not a lot that two people or three people can do on a major fire. It's, it requires. You know, additional agencies.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanna understand this better because it's, it's kind of like Panhandle Health District where I have to defer to other agencies and that's a part of a project, right?
Yeah, currently we're in that situation. Chief Carpenter left on twelve thirty one and uh is now a state fire agent. And she serves, I think, Kootenay, Bonner and Boundary Counties, I believe.
Appreciate you doing that, Earl. Yeah, um, anyone else have questions for Commissioner Fowler?
Commissioner Fowler, are you here uh in in an official capacity or just giving your own personal opinions on stuff?
Kind of a little of each, really. I I felt that somebody from the district should be here to respond rather than not show up at all.
Really appreciate you coming.
Any other questions here?
Great, thank you, Commissioner.
Right, thanks.
Let's see, Mary Ralsski. Hey, so you've got four minutes, Mary.
Yay. Um, Mary Ralsski, Bonner, Bonner County resident, um, and the neighborhood is stated up there. Um, a couple of things, um, just wanted to um expand on Josh's um state RV park. Um, it. Looks as if um they, a fourteen day stay in a thirty day period is massive and loud. Correct me if I'm.
That's a state owned RV parks.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then I just wanted to make um a little correction to um the zoning staff's report in that the. Property on the other side of Clagstone Road, um, that is not vacant vacant, it's under development. There's power going in. Very clear that somebody's probably gonna be building a house there. Um, I walk that road just about every day, so. Um, obviously, I'm um concerned with a lot of what everybody else has already said, so I'm not gonna yammer on that. Um, I do wanna make a point that at the corner of Clagstone and Al's Welding, that is a school bus stop. I do not have children, but it's loaded with cars. Kids are walking all directions, gonna have an impact. Um. Obviously, the fire um. Is is really a big issue. Um, I'm glad the commissioner um mentioned um being short staffed. Um, I attended their most, one of their most recent meetings. In Spirit Lake and um I was appalled at how shorthanded they really are. Um, so. Um, and would just like to emphasize um how the sheriff's department, I think, is being taken rather lightly. Um, they're stating that something like this is better placed in zones with close proximity to emergency infrastructure. Um, and emergency services as stated in our own comp plan. Um, Panhandle Health has previously conveyed to the landowner that this parcel is not suitable and doesn't have adequate space to meet appropriate wastewater discharge. Um, and then just looking at our own comp plan um statements. Um, Bonner County should follow the attorney general's checklist within the county's comprehensive plan stating. That the property rights of the applicant adjoining and nearby landowners and future generations should be considered. As well as the short term, long term consequences um of these decisions. Um, and then also under economic development, land use and the egg policies within the comp plan. Um, emphasizes small scale and um cottage industries and home occupations um out in rural fives, okay? Um, this is not a small scale cottage business that he's proposing. Um. It's very high density. Maintaining our agricultural heritage is also emphasized in the comp plan. Farm related programs, market, markets and collaborative initiatives. Does not jive with our rural vibe out there. And um and then also development standards um are to be appropriate for the surrounding community. Protect the ag uses and the environment from activities that create land use conflicts or in. Interference created by residential, commercial or industrial development, okay? Um, this is kind of Reader's Digest version in my interpretation of what's stated in the comp plan with regards to this particular project. Um, and then evaluation of suitability should be based on availability of urban services, adequate access to hard surface publicly maintained roads. And other factors that may impact our surrounding community. So um I appreciate all of you. Um, not only volunteering for a board, because I feel your pain that way. Um, but um we really appreciate you taking a hard look at um this application. Thank you.
I have a question for you, if you don't mind. Um. I think earlier was the the, somebody else specified that the road, a little about, a bit about the roads. I just wanna really understand the feel of the area better. You mentioned you you walk the roads daily.
Yes.
Um, when you walk out there, I guess, we don't have sidewalks. This is dirt road. I saw the pictures.
Yeah, it was just graded yesterday.
Oral pits on the, just created.
It was just graded, yeah.
More million.
Yes.
When you're walking, do you feel like you're in danger when you're on on these roads?
Um.
What's the feeling there?
Potentially, yes, on Clagstone. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of pickup truck traffic, commuter traffic. Um, you know, people, a lot of people use the Blanchard cutoff, um, you know, as a cutoff from forty one in various areas and. Um, and a lot of people use Al's Welding Road um to cut off from Blanchard over to the Spirit Lake cutoff, so.
Do you see other people walking on the roads when you're out there?
Occasionally.
Imagine you go out for five minutes and you probably go on a walk.
Yeah, walk or hike. Um, and it's, it's not.
You walk on the side of the road or down the middle of the road? Like, how how do you avoid all of this?
Um, or I'll jump into the ditch or the woods.
You see ATVs and motorcycles or UTVs or are there people out there exploring and?
On on weekends, um, you know, we, uh, I live on Huntsman Way and I know you guys probably don't care where I live, but I'm right, right off of Al's Welding Road um to the south is Huntsman Way. And um, yeah, just about every weekend we get either somebody coming in and they're just exploring, driving around. Um, you know, it's, it's a power line and it goes directly behind my house and every time I have to come out there and say. You know, back the truck up. Um, and then also down um the Blanchard cutoff, which is um to the west is the twenty five fifty. Or a service road. So there's a lot of jeeping and side by sides that um are active in that area on weekends too. You're welcome. Anybody else?
Just one more question. Um. Do you know what the speed limits are? Are they just the county standard?
I I believe they're thirty five. I mean, if anybody.
The county standard.
Yeah. But yeah, that that would be my guess, um, and I see that they did. Yeah, very, yeah. But yeah, I mean, and then obviously from a fire standpoint, I don't know if you can zoom out that map, but um, to show that the surrounding area a little more accurately, we have had a lot of pretty good sized fires in that area over the last five years and I found out there too, so, and I was directly affected by one of them, so appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Pat Gunter?
Oh, I'm giving my read to Susan.
Okay. And Monica Gunter? Your husband didn't give you your time.
Monica Gunter, Bonner County resident. So, um, on these letters that you received over the how many years he's been doing this, do you guys read every single one and take to heart what every single one says? My guess is that ninety-nine point nine percent are against this project. And I think you guys have a real responsibility to listen to the heartfelt feelings of the people in the letters too, just like all these people here. They live right there. Not only are there gonna be up to eighty people, even forty, just say forty people in that triangle, you know, everybody living in an RV because this will be living in an RV because there's no recreation around there. This is a living in an RV park and they're all gonna have two dogs. Everybody that lives like that and that house, all those houses around. It's just, it's, it's awful, so. Um, thank you for consideration, but I think, I think these people deserve to be heard. And um Dan McDonald told us one time at a meeting like this that the planners and the commissioners don't care if there's fire suppression, they don't care if there's sewer anything, they don't care about the rules and regulations, that's up to the entities that control that. So they will, they will pass a project, the commissioners or you guys will pass a project without knowing if the sewer is gonna do it, or if the water suppression from the fire department, or if the lighting controls, my, I really wish that they would figure all that stuff out before you approve a CUP or anything else that's happening. Because it is important and the part that um only stay for thirty days, that's in that, that's in the form, as they said. Somebody's got to go out there, and if you guys approve it, it's gonna cost somebody to go out and look at his books and make sure they're staying for thirty days. And that can all be tweaked too, so somebody's got to enforce that. And I, we've seen many times that it's not being, the rules are not being enforced because Bonner County doesn't have a way to enforce them. And that will, I'm sure that's what will happen here, it won't be enforced. There will be a lot of people and a lot of dogs living on that property, not recreating because they're living there and affecting all those houses around it, which is really sad, it's five acre minimums out there.
To be clear, we do care about fire.
But you can approve these things without.
I I have to, I have to set that aside because I can't do anything about it. I am not allowed to do anything about it.
Well, that's my point, I wasn't talking to you guys, why you can approve a CUP without knowing.
And the county, the board of county commissioners.
That's what I'm saying, that needs to be taken.
All right, I can also say we have a dog expert on the commission.
I love dogs, but that's a lot of dogs and one will swear.
Susan Bowman with six minutes.
Evening commissioners, uh Susan Bowman, uh Bonner County resident, so when the people in here purchase their property RV parks were not allowed in their zone. In two thousand and nineteen, the county commissioners decided for us people uh without notice to us, by the way, that they were going to start allowing RV parks in the rural residential and ag zones. Okay, when when they decided that for us and again, I'm going to emphasize not giving us proper notice, so we didn't even know that they were doing that. Um, they they decided to do that without any analysis whatsoever. Analysis of impacts of RV parks, not done, didn't care. What did they use as an excuse? They said there was quote unquote in their words, demand for RV parks in these rural residential zones. I don't know about you, but none of my neighbors, none of these people want RV parks in any of their rural zones, they didn't move out there and they didn't buy these properties for the um, but here we are, and they and they did it anyway, and I want to mention also that when they were changing the code to allow RV parks, they specifically took out the requirement that a hundred and twenty days, that that somebody could only stay a hundred and twenty days in an RV park, that was in the code. And they took it out at the same time that they allowed it in the rural residential zones, why? Because they want them to be residential, that that's the only way that I could even come up with any logical conclusion. Um, and why did they, they also stated at that same time that they took them out because there was no way to enforce it. No way at all, and that's true, there's no way to enforce that. Uh, we don't have the staff to enforce that kind of stuff, that's ridiculous, even to think that you're gonna have a logbook and all this stuff, that that is, it's it's laughable, it it's not a good um idea. Uh, but here we are, and with the code as it is right now, and so you have to administer the code as it is. CUPs are conditional use permits. So they're allowed conditionally, you're allowed to add conditions, but really the main focus of conditional use permits is that you are supposed to be looking at impacts. And you're supposed to be mitigating those impacts. Now you've heard a lot of um impacts tonight, and there's a lot more that haven't even been said. Um, I I challenge you to write any condition that can actually mitigate any one of those impacts, they tried with the stay thing, that is not gonna work. Think it through logically, use critical thinking, there is no way you can mitigate any impact, it's just, it's not not gonna happen. One of the code sections left out is twelve two two two. And that is the application contents that the that the applicant is supposed to provide, and it says the applicant needs to provide a narrative statement that addresses the um the effects of elements such as noise, glare, odors, fumes, vibrations on adjoining properties. Also needs to provide the compatibility of the proposal with the adjoining land uses. The applicant has not provided either one of those, staff has not provided any input on that. Why does the applicant need to provide all this? Because of the impact. Conditional use permits are not just something that you can prove because, you know, somebody wants them. The the whole point of them is to examine evidence before you to be able to see if there is a way to approve it. You can easily deny this based on the fact that he didn't even provide the application contents, first of all. Um, I appreciate you, Mr. Blazer. That you're seeking evidence, you're asking people questions, you you all are doing that because it wasn't provided to you. You know, good decisions are made on evidence, facts. What you have with the staff report and with the applicant and his application is you have opinions, but you don't have facts. You need to base your decision on facts. When you have facts, then you can have findings of fact. Okay, and that's why, that's why this lost two times in court and we won. No findings of fact means that you cannot have conclusions of law. Okay, and your whole decision is based on conclusions of law. So you don't have the findings of fact, therefore, again tonight, you will not be able to make proper conclusions of law, same staff report. Both judges said no to it, you don't have it, you don't have the findings of fact. Again, that's based on evidence. Um, am I on my first or second? So, um, I just want to say also finally that these folks have been before boards and courts now seven times, okay? I understand the applicant is weary as well, but the 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 court keeps kicking it back to the commissions because the county is not doing their job. Okay, they are not doing their job by providing you with the information that you need to make a proper decision. So I'm asking you to deny this application today based on the fact that you don't have the facts. You don't have really any facts, that's why you're seeking them. And then therefore you can't make a a lawful decision tonight. And that's what you need to make, and um I also just, you know, want to finally say thank you um for volunteering, I know this is not an easy job, um and and it takes a lot of homework and I really, really appreciate that you come here and you do this job, so I want to make sure to extend that thank you to you because I I really do appreciate it.
What, excuse me? I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Maybe one, um, this has been a burning question in my mind. So is there, are there any, I mean, this is a hard question to answer. Is there, are there, is there any rural area where an RV park would make sense and would be in your mind?
No, and just by the way, I'm a planner as well. I've been planning for twenty-three years, um, just throwing that out there, but um basically, the reason they were never allowed in the rural zones is because what you do as a planner is before you say this is gonna go here and that's gonna go there, you evaluate the impacts, and by impacts, I mean this prop, you know, you're gonna have a single family area. Um, you do not want to have incompatible impacts, right? And an RV park is absolutely, that that's why it wasn't allowed before, that code was written by planners. It was the county commissioners that decided that they wanted to bring RV parks into the the zones for residential uses really is what they did, that that's why they took out the residential. So no, RV parks have have never been appropriate uses in a rural residential zone, and I want you to all to just think for a moment, where do you live? Do you want to be looking at twenty, thirty, forty, fifty RVs? Do you want to do that? Because I don't think you do, there is no way to mitigate the noise, think of the noise, have you been in an RV park? Noise, light, glare.
Dogs.
Dogs, dogs.
So I have a, I have a poll going, since we're going down this I have to go down this road a little farther, so my next question would be, are are there any commercials that should be in rural area?
Certainly, yeah, there's plenty of smaller.
How about a racetrack? How about a, how about a gun?
I'm, well, I'm pretty fit to a fan. A what?
An outdoor theater.
Uh, an outdoor theater, no, and in fact, I have spoken against that.
These are all in the commercially used table four. Already there.
And they should be renewed, they should be renewed. Yeah, no, those should all be removed, and I've spoken against some of those before, we've had wedding venues, all kinds of, yeah. Yeah, and and those are really highly impactful to a rural residential neighborhood, so no, they don't at all.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your opinion. Nancy.
I just what.
Nancy Leroy Mott, I'm a Bonner County resident, and I want to thank you guys for taking time to listen to us. Um, and I agree with everything that's been said, um, the impact of a rural area. I don't think any of you would want to have a an RV park next to you, think of a rural area, that's why we live there, thank you.
And is it Deanne Foltz?
Yeah, I did have one more thought.
Okay, go ahead.
Deanne Foltz, uh Bonner County resident as well. Um, I don't do much walking there because it is so uh congested and um along the roads there. Uh, but we do, as uh somebody stated, have a lot of weekend rollers coming up and down, and I can't imagine the impact of even more rollers. And the other thing that hasn't been said is when those rollers get into an accident and we have to have response for ambulances and that response is um pretty much like the fire department and, you know, just having that um compound. So the rolling is the motorcycles, the side by sides, which, you know, I I some is good, but a lot going fifty miles an hour up the roads where you can hear them.
Those things which are not gallopers.
Yes, yes, rollers. The rolling speedsters, um, so and, you know, people have said stuff about the speed limits and and such, so the weekends are, and the summertime is when the kids come out, they do live there, so you compound that with eighty people that don't. You've got a lot of traffic that is gonna cause accidents.
I meant to ask this earlier, probably of staff, but if you can answer, that'd be great, how far away is Highway forty-one from from here, I know it's to the south.
If you go down Els Welding, if you go up more, then you have to go up Spirit Lake two miles to get to forty-one, or you can go down Clagstone a mile to get to forty-one.
No, thanks for zooming up, appreciate it, thanks. Foltz, is there anyone who has not signed up to share public testimony that would like to at this time? Is there anyone online that's asking?
Yes, there's a Jeannie and a Orin Martin.
We take Jeannie first? Uh, Jeannie, it's your turn, you've got three minutes, you should see the timer on your screen, can you hear us, Jeannie?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tabor, it's Jenny. And I I live um off, right off Clagstone and um Blanchard cutoff. I'm next to the property that's being built on that she was talking about, they said vacant, it's not vacant anymore. Um, I met the neighbors, but um I do walk, try to walk up and down there and I have family. Um, my husband usually goes in front and it is people's speed down there all the time. Um, and also the ruts also are all the divots and holes, there's one big one in front of the driveway there that was there. Um, I have family members that won't come visit because it gets so bad, um, down the Clagstone there. Um, I would really hope you can dis- deny the um application for them for the RV park. So, um, yeah, thank you.
Hey, we have another person in addition to the second, um, Lauren Martin.
Or Orin Martin? Can you hear me one?
Uh, Orin Martin, Wayne Martin, uh, Bonner County resident. The speed limit on that road is listed as thirty-five uh during the wet weather, uh, hot whole time. If you're smart, you're doing fifteen or less. Just so you have an idea, uh, but yes, people do go speeding through there. Traveling through that, traffic wise is very poor. I had intended to be there, uh, but because I have pneumonia and under doctor's orders to rest, I am staying at home. Dave Bowman hit a lot on the fire uh situation. The amount of water that Debbie Carpenter unfortunately said would be okay is not adequate. Having a a large interest in the fire service and and knowledge that way. The, one of the things that Debbie mentioned, well, we're going to call out the tenders, uh, the tankers that are becoming. Okay, you have Timberlake, you've got one at Spirit Lake, you've got, you know, Sagel, uh, Northside uh, and others that can be called out, but if we have a major fire, like we have recently, two of them out in the Blanchard area, those tenders are out there. And you can't just automatically say, well, we need to pull our tender out of the area to come take care of this fire. The tenders are assigned and until they are released by the incident commander, they are stuck providing water for those engines and other equipment, putting it out. That, the location of this is not an appropriate location to call out an aircraft to be able to put the fire out. We had a fire recently out at the Jewel Lake area. And the main reason that the fire was put out was because they called aircraft out to extinguish it. I, even on my best day, I would not be out walking along Clagstone uh, Els Welding Road and all, uh, my head would be on a a constant swivel uh, and all because of the way people drive and unfortunately, and many of you should be aware of it. Uh, driving has become even worse than what it used to be. Uh, so I would like you to can strongly consider to deny this request. Uh, because otherwise I'm afraid that the county's gonna end up having to be going to court on this again. Thank you, and thank you for following. Thank you, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, thank you. Just saw that third one.
Yes.
Okay, what's the name?
Michelle Johnson.
Michelle Johnson, it's your turn.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Michelle. Go ahead.
Michelle Johnson, Bonner County resident. One, I agree with all of what our fellow Bonner County residents have stated um, in regards to this. Also too, um, living next door to a commercial outdoor business, you cannot mitigate the noise. Trees do nothing, sound carries. We have neighbors that hear the disruption at least a half a mile away. Um, but I also recall on the application, the applicant mentioned something about laundry facilities. Laundry facilities, from my understanding, are not even allowed in a rural residential area. So that was definitely a concern, especially with sewage and water. And also in regards to the applicant referencing six other RV parks during this timeframe. Um, it is my understanding, one in Coca-Lala, um, it was Ag Forest 20. It's accessed along Highway 95 also, and it's 55 and older. So you cannot just compare all RV parks to one. You have to look at each application separately. You cannot compare apples and oranges. Um, and I asked that you please deny the CUP application, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Hey, thank you. All right, do we have anybody else online?
Yes.
All right, that's the end of public comments then. Good job, everyone.
Thanks for listening.
All right, uh, we will forego discussion and wait for deliberation. The chair closes the hearing to public testimony, and next on the agenda are applicant and staff rebuttal. Before we do that, it will take a 10-minute break, recess in the business. So, um, this hearing is recessed until, let's say, eight oh six. Let's say till eight ten. So this, uh, hearing recessed till eight ten.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get started. Okay, the meeting will come to order, time is eight ten. All right. Rebuttal. Staff, I'll have you rebuttal first. You have one?
I tend not to prepare any rebuttals, I'm here to answer your question from the zoning commission and any clarifying questions you have due to public comment.
Why don't you sit down and let me do the applicant first then?
That's fine, the one thing I have is that list you guys requested, so this is a list of conditional use permits for RV parks and campgrounds. Six have been approved, one has expired. One, two, three have been in the rule five. The one's in the rural service center, two is in the rural service center, and one in A F ten, so I have plenty of copies here, if anybody wants a copy, I'd be able to do that.
Okay, I appreciate you doing that research on our short notice.
I can't promise this is an exhaustive list, but I've done my best.
All right. Yeah, compared to.
These have been stamped in, that's evidence, it's the it's the payment for my septic permits.
Oh, okay. So this is where you made a payment and then they further back because of why? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's an email, it's an email saying my permit will expire on the first of next month. Almost thirty days from now, my permit should expire. It's telling me to pay, and then those are my two receipts for paying, and they receive payments on both receipts, and there is a receipt showing the permit number for each of my two septic systems. Saying we've we've received your payments, your permits are extended up to point point six. And then later, another email means they're saying, or changing their minds, your permits are now extended after all. They're dissolved.
Okay.
But apparently, but the deadline actually is like another month for paying, so.
Have to walk in the office and pay on the door.
So. I want to start by pointing out that and this has been pointed out in many other previous hearings, but I don't think it got explicitly pointed out this hearing. But each one of these subsequent hearings isn't necessarily trying to unpack and unhash like a dozen topics. Most of these hearings are trying to funnel towards like the new issue. And a lot of times, a lot of previous hearings, they've they've said, okay, hey, we've already had a whole hearing on that topic. We're not talking about fire anymore, that's already signed up, or we're not talking about this, that's already figured out. So for me to come back up here like, I'm going to give a shot at refuting about five, ten different things that people brought up. But these are things that have already been you know, found in my favor in the past. So other boards have already determined I meet the requirements, so it's a little bit frivolous in a sense. But I I don't think most of you have heard this case, so it's like, I can try to point out some of these issues, okay? So as far as fire, I talked to two chiefs on it, I had the first chief come out to the property and met with him in person. We walked the perimeter of the property, he gave me instructions as to how to trim up the trees. We talked a lot about that. And I talked about that on multiple hearings since that fire has been signed off on. So the next fire chief officially signed off approving my project, and if you want to pull up my B L P, my building location permit, you can see fire has already signed off, that's already been approved, so I I mean, I don't know how many of these previously signed off things we want to open up. It just creates an ongoing loop, if every time we resolve one, we open up another five, and then our next hearing we have to like, it's like opening up cans of worms, like like once you get the lid on one, we need to lead it.
We're starting over at the beginning now, because of what's happened with this report, like, this is we're starting all over fresh now. But we get to go over it all again.
Okay. I've had multiple people tell me that I've had the best site plan for design. I've had some people say that my site plan would probably end up being the new reference site plan because it was so good, and that was before I had engineered the plan to run it. And and I've had previous county commissioners comment that my RV park design is the most defensible that they had seen in reference to fire. Having the two exits, having the multiple roads within, and exiting and entering onto two separate roads made it one of the the best designs for mitigating fire. The two hundred and fifty gallons of water associated with the fire. We've ruled on this several times, that has been something that has constantly been shown and approved that the fire districts are able to bring that volume of water to the property. That's what the ruling was on our previous hearings. So a lot of the stuff we went over in other hearings and everything, and it's been approved and reappraised. As far as parking, that was addressed. And the twenty seven hundred square foot size of each of my spaces, that's fifty percent more than the code requires. I built built my spots fifty percent bigger than the code requires, code requires eighteen hundred square feet, so the like the parking concerns, we went over this at a lot of other hearings, my spots are fifty percent bigger than required. I mean hazardous. We've went over this repeatedly, I mean, it's, I mean, I think it's in staff report. I think it's page twenty two. Could be wrong, though we we went over hazardous things and every time the rulings have shown it will not impose a great hazard on the communities. So that's been, we've, that's been finding each time. I've never, they've never determined that it is hazardous, they've always determined that it's not hazardous. As far as hazards, today I actually filed another police report, my third police report for criminal activity taken towards me with working on this case. So I'm, as far as hazards, I'm on my third this report and have to file for criminal action, has nothing to do with this room. Separate actions people are taking against me. So are we gonna like undo my storm plan? Because that's approved, that's stamped in and approved, my storm plan. Do I have to redesign my storm plan and resubmit it? Do I have to redo to resubmit all of my approved sign offs from all of these different departments? It it's not it's, that's not really fair. That's not a fair way to approach this, and every time there's an additional like condition added to my application, it often just starts my process over. So if I'm working with half a dozen different departments and and then I have a bunch, a whole layer of conditions in my permit, the the verbiage may or may not, like conflict with stuff that's already resolved. And it might start me to like force me to have to start over a process that I'm five years into. Five years into this, I I mean, I I don't think we're trying to throw out my stormwater plan. I don't think we're trying to delete my septic permits, I don't think we should be throwing out my fire sign up. I don't think we should be undoing all the progress that I've made on on these fronts. I think the big reason it's been it's not gone in my favor in the courts, in two courts, because I didn't I mean, I've been approved repeatedly, 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 and the county had an attorney to represent their findings. And each time I felt like I could rely on the county's attorney to defend the county's ruling, because the county has ruled in my favor every time and unanimously. Each time has been a unanimous approval because it meets the code. Every single one has been a unanimous approval from zone and commissions. I I've received, I've been treated very fairly, I would say by our zoning commission and our county missions, commissioners, and I really do appreciate that. And honestly, I've learned a lot from my opposition as well, so I do appreciate that, although it's harder to receive. But I've grown and learned a lot from this five years. I mean, some people pointed out living in an RV or not wanting near me, I spent a, I spent a lot of years of my life living in an RV, and that was with mom and dad and six brothers and sisters, so there was nine of us, that was crazy. But that's that's what my family was forced into after my dad was put out of business in Washington, who a bunch of biggest case in the state of Washington for two years straight, if you want to go back and look at all this, biggest story in Washington, and after that corruption and my family ended up coming over here and I lived in RV for a number of years while my family rebuilt over here in Idaho, the land of the free. I mean, these are, a lot of these have been submitted years ago, but it really wasn't dug dirty. And I did really haul off fifty thousand pounds of trash, these are indirect or in some way, maybe even similar. And I did demo the double wide that was there, but wasn't being occupied. Did demo the building to make rain for this part. I want to talk a little more about the conditions. That's a very this is, this is going to be contested for probably another six years. So, and that's fine. That's fine, my job's associates, I don't worry about which ones. So, but I would, I would ask that you if you're going to make changes to the conditions, I would ask you start cutting them. I would appreciate if you could start scratching off these conditions. I have more conditions on my part than any other part that I'm aware of. It's a lot of conditions. Each one complicates, it gives more angles of attack, it complicates my other permits. And instead of adding more restrictions, I would appreciate it if you could even consider looking at, looking through the list with me and decide which ones we can just scratch off because they are not required by code. Milton at some of our first hearings, I remember watching him try to jump into the conversation and be like, hey, you guys don't need to impose that restriction. That's not the intent of our code is to require this person to meet other departments' standards. That's just implied, we are just trying to meet our standards. He's already going to have to go meet other department's standards. So now it's just a double layer of verbiage on each one, it gives more reasons to attack this project. I mean, I'd be happy to, people are interested, we could go back through there, look at some of the other ones and start crossing them off. That would be just as valid of an approach to this topic, adding more, we could go through all the ones we have and talk about which ones we can eliminate. Also, another thing, I mean, I did get approved for it by, I don't even think I brought this up. My attorney did a great job. And after going back a lot, we negotiated an agreement, so I can use water from my well, so that's great. So now I'm allowed to use water from my well from the Department of Water Resources. I had to negotiate like a bare minimum because I had a ton of letters disapproving to that permit. But that's going to be the case in every office I go to. So that hurdle's crossed off, so if if if, I think in the staff report, it said I had to, like, that's one of the conditions, I have to get my well approved by Department of Water Resources. That's already happened, so that we can cross that one off. But there, but there's a, a lot of this stuff that it adds weight to an already drowning, drowning business. And the these public offices should be here to help people, should be here to support the support the growth, support expansion, support to help when laws become, Benjamin Franklin said, ten thousand laws destroys all respect for the law. The really, what? My permit has, by anyone's standard has been critiqued up and down, left and right for half a decade. Half a decade. And I keep getting approved because it meets the standard. So it's easy for people to stand up and say things. It's easy for people to stand up and say things about how it doesn't meet the code, but it continually does. Because it just does. So some of these new conditions just drastically, it it's, it's, this is how, it says how monopolies are created. If you, I would encourage people to go home and watch a YouTube about the about that court case I alluded to. Yip Wu versus Hopkins, there's a wonderful fifteen minute presentation about that YouTube about how permits can be structured to hurt people hurt individuals, and it takes the case straight to the Supreme Court. And it comes down to equal rights from the Fourteenth Amendment. So it's actually a very interesting story. I would ask I would ask that we strike Amendment seventeen on page twenty eight. I would ask that we strike number eighteen. Strike number nineteen.
Are you looking, oh, they're including the law?
So I, so I I have to take issue with those, so the conditions of approval, we could skip to page twenty nine. So strike, it would be striking A ten. A eleven. We could strike B one as well. We could strike B two. It's, we've already realized that these departments are not trying to help me. If the department's not trying to help me, why are we making a restriction that says we have to get them to approve it? When they're deleting my permits? How is that fair? And B three. Let's strike that one too. Water rate has been approved, B four, we can strike that one. Stormwater erosion plan, that was signed off on years ago. B five, let's strike that one. Maybe this is already signed up on. This is the whole stormwater. And the guy who did this raises price by about four times, four X, four hundred percent, from when he started the project to when he ended the project, because his, his stormwater plans, which were accepted quickly overnight, were extremely hard to get approved. So my bill jumped up four X from what his quote was because of pushback. So we it's approved, it's, it's already, it's already accepted. Part of my building location permit. Let's leave the stormwater plan. This fire district sign off is already accepted. It's already signed off with even extra handwritten notes, it's already part of my B L P. Let's leave that. My subject permits, I assume they'll be able to find them. Otherwise, I can show them the copies. I'll, I'll, I'll fight these battles individually. But you have to give me some slack on this. I can't, I can't swim carrying all these all these restrictions. That's, it's impossible.
Can I, can I have a first second?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm kind of confused, if all of these have been already submitted and approved, why are they, are are these new conditions?
They're just conditions for this particular
They're simply these conditions?
We're starting from almost the beginning.
Okay.
And so it's just our job to say, hey, you need to make sure you got a stormwater management plan, if you don't, it's a B condition, so you just have to drop it off at the office tomorrow.
Okay, so it has to resubmit it then?
Or get, or get an email from the director that says, yeah, we've got it.
Okay, so if it's submitted once
Get the permit again.
It's a positive.
Hand up the one that I already got.
Yeah, so are there things that were
Those are just B conditions that are common to every conditional use permit to say, well, if we already have it, then just send an email to the permit, you know, we've got it.
He just has to provide documentation, so.
Okay, so my old documentation from my B L P still stands? Like, that's, my B L P still works? Because that's already been approved, my building location permits, so once I, the the conditional use got approved, which has been approved, yeah, repeatedly. But once it got approved, I filed and I got the building location permit and I started working. So I've been like invested in the process after I not just got the conditional use permit approved, but went ahead and paid and bought my, already paid to buy my building location permit, I've already like paid all these fees that every year do keep going up.
Yeah, so, so if you can satisfy B one. My documentation, I quickly decree water approval by the Idaho Department of Environmental Protection, B C R C, twelve, three, 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 no eight. And you just need to send an email to the planning department tomorrow, remind them of that, and check the box on B one.
Okay, if, let me see. Am I reading?
It doesn't say submit a new application.
I somewhat, yeah, so, okay, so my bad on that one, I apologize. I was thinking that was Department of Water. My bad.
And B two says, if the waste fire system is determined, I feed to your D Q to exceed twenty five hundred gallons per day. Right, if you approve it from D to your, and out to sure, if you don't need, that's a if.
Yeah.
If you don't need an L S A S, then you don't need, there's nothing to satisfy on B two, right? Because you don't need an L S A S. So I don't need you to get new stuff, I just needed to take what you've got and resubmit it as part of this process, that's all there is.
And and B three, has that been satisfied?
Yeah, if you should provide documentation.
Yes, it was signed off, yes. So, and I'm assuming it's accepted again.
As long as your letter says, is from Spirit Lake Fire Department, Fire District, and says that fire flow spacing setbacks and fire exit standards have been satisfied, then.
Okay, well, here's now a ton of new verbiage. Once again, like, we're adding this stipulation here, it's a lot of new verbiage, it already has been signed off, so now somebody's going to attack me on all this piece. Hey, my spacing, what's the fire district approved for spacing, is it different than the county? Now, okay.
That's for you to go talk to the fire department, that's not for you to talk to me about.
Correct, but they signed off on it years ago. It's the
Does it, does it have that language?
No, somebody arbitrarily wrote this language in here. That's, I mean, that's why
It's pretty reasonable language.
So my, so my fire sign out doesn't work.
Probably not.
Okay.
I don't think you have to submit like a five hundred dollar check to get that one, or you just go have a consultation with the fire, or fire chief whenever he's hired, or work with the commissioner that we were chatting with earlier and and see what he can do to help you out with something.
Okay.
This isn't like hard, I know it's not fair, I get that, but it's not, this, this is not like a huge This this is not like a huge burden to ask me to get a letter from the fire district saying, yeah, this is, we look at it.
That's two fire chiefs.
I can't address you, you know, fairness, I'm sorry, that's not my job, I can't address the fact that the code isn't perfect, also not my job.
But you do have discretion on means.
Do I? To just say, don't worry about fire protection?
You do have discretion on these conditions, these are conditions, so that's.
Yeah, and I'm gonna I'm gonna cover my ass by making sure that we get those conditions met. So that I don't end up in district or saying, Mr. Marvel, how come there was a big old fire out here, didn't you have a condition in your, no, I didn't, cause I just thought it was inconvenient for everybody.
Um before you have water rights, I mean, they they don't, right?
I sure hope not, sure hope not.
We've got water.
Okay, so B four, okay, that's the one I was referring to earlier on B one, I thought I was B one, so yeah, B four, yes.
Okay, so you got those.
Yeah.
And you had the thing for the uh erosion engineer you just held up, and that's been submitted approved already, right?
Yeah.
It looks like most of these have already been done.
Yeah, well, I I was getting some feedback from my my pre-approval on for the fire district.
No, it's probably something not taken care of, I guess.
Yeah. Um the 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 ride or die issue is really A ten and A eleven.
And it would be terribly irresponsible of me to take those off. That's those those particular conditions calls why we are here tonight. So it's for you. To appeal. Not for me to say, yeah, whatever, and just start over from twenty twenty two. We are a quasi judicial bodies. My feedback from. A judge twice is. The A ten and A eleven are not go triple.
That's that's what the, okay.
That's how I interpret what I understand as a member of the commission. So I can't see another way around it.
Uh, okay.
But if you want to go down the legislative route, that's what an appeal is for. As if the planning department, the planning commission and the board of board of county commissioners can help address.
So I mean, many times in this report, it points out that this is not a housing development, it's clearly. I mean, the verbiage of the report multiple times says this is a seasonal RV park that needs the code.
Intention is one thing, but putting it in writing is another, and this is a way to say, here's rice.
Yeah, I I do feel like it's.
Dude, it's unfair, I get it. It's totally unfair. I've lost my shirt at least twice. Doing deals. And nobody came in the same thing, there's no golden parachute. Cause my daddy doesn't have a ton of money.
Hey. I have I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um on uh on fire thing, is there are there fire rings or any live fires allowed in the in the park?
Uh I I one of the previous discussions I talked about having those in the center of the circle. Uh so you surrounded with the twenty year old area. Yeah, I mean, a lot of campgrounds have fire pits that grill to the flames, uh but it would be that would be in a grassy area surrounded in the middle of a cul-de-sac.
Okay, that's on the site.
Uh at least it's been discussed a few times.
There's a wellhouse on site plan.
Yes, sir.
Between two. RV spaces, and it says that it's six feet by eight feet.
Uh six by eight, I can sell you.
You agree that it says that on site plan?
Says.
There's a wellhouse that's marked green, says six feet by eight feet.
When I see here is being on this plan, you have to read the notes.
I'm referencing that one.
Yeah, okay. Six foot eight, yes.
So there's a setback issue there. The RV needs to be, to have a certain setback from your structures. Don't think we need to do anything about that, I'm just telling you that that's probably going to come up as you work with planning. And that will help to start to start to leaving some spaces.
It's very possible, yes.
Okay. I looked really close at. Uh this document. It's not very helpful for you. But as I interpret the code. And I'm looking at. Well, four ninety seven. A one, so the space needs to be not less than eighteen hundred square feet with not less than twenty four feet. So space is thirty feet, but then there's this ten foot buffer, so look at the buffer is in B two. In that same section, it says an RV may not be located closer than ten feet from any other RV or permanent building, so I guess. The twenty foot space where the parking is sufficient. Is the overall thirty feet and the buffer prevents two RVs from being ten feet apart.
So I'll comment on that, so the gravel is the gravel pad. That I have marked down here at twenty by fifty, that's kind of irrelevant, because it doesn't talk about that, I added that on. So the important number is right above it, thirty by ninety.
Yeah.
So that's the requirement that the code requires, so I that is the the standard that the code asks for, and that's fifty percent higher. For eighteen square feet, about twenty seven square feet, so I'm double that, the gravel is not a a coast sand, I just drew it on there. It's repeatedly been. Accepted as adequate in in this, it needs to be extended, if I run into an issue, there's not a rule about me dumping a load of gravel somewhere, if.
Twenty seven hundred square feet is a little bit dishonest, because on the. West side, the spots on the west side are really sixty five feet deep when you count the setback where you should be building a landscape buffer. But you've drawn it such that those twenty seven hundred square foot spaces go all the way to the. And the edge of the block.
Yeah, so I haven't ever seen this discrepancy. Um I'm required to have a tree perimeter. Um I have to have twenty five percent tree coverage, um I put a lot of the math up here and. Where I calculate tree canopy, but I I have to have twenty five percent. Tree coverage for the property, it doesn't matter that the tree coverage for the property is within another spaces. Um since it's not.
The landscaping standards, you can put a little bit with your space for this for the RV though.
The landscaping standards. Uh twenty five percent tree coverage or.
Twelve or six. Buffer requirements. Five or six or. So again, I don't think that it matters for the permit, because it's going to come up as you work through actually. Placing these items, another concern I noticed is that your twenty foot wide roads are great. Fire department wants twenty six, so you'll have to convince them that because there's a loop. And it's probably one way. That you're you're good, we call that as a concern, but I don't think it is. I think if you're going to be able to convince the fire department that twenty feet is fine because there's a loop.
Question, you're you're getting into deliberation, you need to ask questions of the applicant or in rebuttal.
Thank you for your correction, Director. Okay. I think I need to ask the director some questions, do you have anything else that you want to talk about in this rebuttal, do you have any other prepared statements for my for the rebuttal?
Sure, um. Uh this stormwater plan, I believe, also has a landscaping plan. Uh I I it's been several years since I seen this, but I think it also does have landscaping plan, I've never ran into an issue with that. Either way, we find because it would still be heating and it's could be, so I mean, if you if you want, we could change the amendment take out. So this is where those um. Conditions on this run create an issue, so now we, because I said. Uh my spots are twenty seven hundred square feet, let's say at some point in the future, I have to make one of them eighteen hundred square feet, which would be the coast standard. We've added that as a condition that my spots have to now be twenty seven hundred square feet. So now if I change one of my spots, am I creating another issue for myself? So. There's a lot of conditions. In here that. Make it hard to have wiggle room.
Any other prepared statements?
I appreciate your time.
Okay.
I appreciate the heading, uh you being able to put up with it. I I know it is one, so it's not your job to, and I appreciate you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Govee. Director, you have a name? So a thirty foot wide space. And a ten foot portion of that space that isn't drivable. Does that satisfy the requirement for twenty four foot wide space and a ten foot buffer between two RVs? To me, it's not clear enough to say that it's not, and so I'm left with probably what's on the site plan is sufficient.
It's a in a in a plain reading of the code, it gives you some very specific standards for review, right, so you know, the twenty four foot wide, not less than eighty hundred square. With ten foot between, so. Have a clear reading, that those are the standards.
Hey, I understand it the same way that you just expressed it, thanks. Does the, does this conditional use permit include? The laundry facility, I don't think it does.
It's actually in the code under the twelve one and seven, it is specified you can't have laundry facilities, so if you look under. The, I believe, park site design, I was looking at this earlier. Or no, sorry, say.
Yeah, laundry facilities number nine.
So you had you had incidental, so they couldn't, if approved, you couldn't use this for somebody coming in or like a laundry mat, right? Would be incidental to the the people using it their own site.
I see. And so that would require a building location permit for the laundry facility. And and it's not real pertinent to the to this specifically to this conditional use permit, except that the one exists for an RV park.
Right, it's shown on the site plan, so it would be permitted with this, let it be some sort of some sort of sewage and and the laundry is a. Big hot topic for sewage, and it's high intensity, would be required under. PhD permits, I'm not sure if that was included in the in their evaluation, or if they just looked at the sites.
I I don't think they did, but I wanted to make sure that it's on the record that we talked about whether or not the laundry facility is included in this permit. It sounds like a building location permit would be separate from the laundry facilities.
Right, I think today he's applied for um. A building location permit for the site itself, so we have a specific permit um required for RV parks and campgrounds, and he's applied for that. Um back, I it's in the staff, or I think it was in twenty two.
Uh any commissioner have questions for staff?
I'd like to go over to the B condition thirty one more time.
Okay.
So. B one, I don't believe has been satisfied, given the new comment we have from you. So this is a a more recent review of this project, that's why this condition has been added as a as a B condition, because. They are seeing this now as a public water system. So what their reviews have been in the past, I think it's irrelevant at this point, because the current review of this is it's a public water system. So I think that means for sure that needs to be made there, like please don't remove it. Um the same comment applies for B two, but we have a review from beauty Q and PhD that are pretty. Um clear that it it appears that, right, this is going to meet over that twenty five hundred gallons, so unless he can prove or. Demonstrate otherwise in some kind of documentation from panel to help, not to include anything previously submitted or or given, I want something to date. Moving forward, right? Same thing with the B three in the fire district, I I would not accept any sign off from twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two from fire chief. We have a clear, well, we have a a comment from the fire district, we have one from twenty three with some clearer guidelines as to what the fire flow would be. The more recent comment, I included that as part of the record, so that you have understanding of what the previous fire chief said, right? The the more current comment is they have a more general concern that um. That needs to be addressed, so that's, you look at the language in that, in that it copy paste right from their comment from the fire district. Um water rights, if the documentation hasn't been submitted to the planning department. Um grading stormwater erosion control, it was submitted with the B L P, but it wasn't submitted into the into the conditional use product. So that might be a a uneasy one to satisfy, but I didn't have it in the record when I reviewed it, and I didn't go back and review everything in the in the building kitchen. As far as the fire standards go. Um state code has building standards and fire standards, um it's been reviewed several times by legal that we. Do not have an adopted fire standard for the county, so we don't have, nor do we review every building. Um building location permits or building permit or anything else going in the county for any kind of fire standard, that's why we route building permits, building location permits. As well as conditional use permits and others to the fire districts to uphold some kind of fire standard, and. That's why when we see these kind of comments come in, we need to craft some kind of conditional approval that says the fire district needs to be satisfying, because that's not a standard that we're going to uphold and review. Questions on that, Bill's online as well, if you guys have any additional questions for him, and he's the one that's done those kind of fiber standard reviews and what is the minimum.
I have no question about that. No, it's pretty clear, actually. And thank you for clarifying.
Let's finish the B condition.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um can you clarify, one of the public comments was about. Um a letter of intention or explanation about mitigating noise light vibration. And or the lack of that, having been submitted, uh I was trying to, I can't find where that's. Where that spelled out as far as what that requirement is and.
Under twelve dash four two one is performance standards for all uses, so there's a narrative that's contained in the application. That has five or six lines about his response to that scenario for quite a bit.
Correctly from my deliberation, that is on a condition that sixty five decibel at the property.
If that's the noise standard, but there's a requirement uh for. Noise like glare, objectionable noises, radioactivity, electrical disper- disturbances, fire hazards, vibrations. More or less like how are you planning on mitigating the potential impact this has? It's kind of a, it's a generic standard for all uses.
Where where are we, where are we fine, cause I had a big question. That's all in the application. It's in the application, yeah, because I I just, I'm I'm trying to vision and envision my mind, because. There's going to be, at at max capacity, there's going to be twenty RVs in there with twenty generators on. And I don't, I mean, how how do you test that, how do you say you're going to mitigate that when you don't even know how to mitigate that, because we don't have that kind of noise there now?
Your power.
Yeah, there's power on.
Like rocks, probably fifty on rocks in each pile.
You just have to worry about the forty dogs that are barking.
Um okay, so and and and, okay, so if we mitigate the noise, say you can't run your jennys. Um what about all the lights, I I see that there's a plan for for trees around the property, but I'm looking at the. At the at the map, and the trees look pretty sparse, and until they grow, what looks, what's going to happen? Now, is there going to be light pollution there until those trees grow in?
I believe that the site plan or the application has. Believe that the site plan or the application has lights at both the front and.
Right.
And there was language in the application about mitigating the, the amount of lights on site. Uh, to just the entrance, I believe, to like, take care of that.
Okay, one last question. Sheriff Wheeler wrote a pretty opinionated response. Um, how, how does, how does that comport with land use of land use? Uh, the land use requirements say that the certain things have to be. Mitigated and, and Sheriff Wheeler's like saying, no, that's really, really not feeling it here on this at all. So how, how does that comport?
I have, this is the first time I've seen the sheriff reply on a, a new land use file. So he gets routed on every land use file going out, just kind of as a data point. So. Even though he did, uh, there's a couple of relevant lines in here. So I think he speaks to if an emergency requires response. More or less this, what he's getting at is it's creating a hazard. So. How to mitigate that anyway? I'm not sure. One, one way you could do is, is limit the number of RVs on there. Maybe reduce it down beyond what's allowed in the code. He, he has some concerns over the rural dirt ingress and egress for all emergency services. Well, as water resources rapidly and adequately available. So that's a bit into the land use and availability, but I think some, some of the comment here touches on. Emergency service response, so. There's not an evaluation of that in the staff report. We, we received it very late. I think we got it the, the last day it was due. I added it to the staff report there. It could be included in some analysis and some findings of fact if. Still it's relevant, wanted to add it into. How, how it impacts the policies that come from.
He's, he's the, he's the, we, uh. He's the guy that we talked to about. Anything that happens in a county is his responsibility. If he has concerns, should they be addressed?
Yes. Absolutely.
It was like every other citizen's, well, that's an application for. Or maybe. But as far as I know, he haven't. Same question about. These people who run up the five folder to appeal decisions that are, that are made by the county instead of fixing the code, they just. Go after it in court. Boy, I don't know. He also comments on the, the irrelevant fact that the, the lot is non-conforming. He's not a land, land use guy.
So you think, you think he's talking about, speaking of school or talking about turn or something?
I think it's interesting. I don't think we can do anything. Like, I, I don't think we have, there's nothing in our toolset. Take the information he shared. And lawyer. Makes sense.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't.
I mean, if we wanted to reduce the number of, of RVs, of RV spaces. This is getting to the celebration. You, you have no standard to compare it as to say, well, we should reduce it to twelve. Who says the call break?
Right, I, I.
He's been very helpful in not telling us anything about that. Right? I don't know. But this is. Any other questions for staff before we go to deliberation? You sure as well not deliberate.
Well, there's, there's, we start from up. On a fairly specific topic, there is a typo that needs to be fixed and repied. That was noted by this.
Good for you.
So.
We have a typo.
Those shall be submitted to and approved by the. County engineer Hartman's that have submitted and through, so. All of the matters. Just to start things off in general, the list of. Conditions. See, appear to be based on the legal case and reading. What, what transpired in what appendix it is. We spent a lot of time in there looking at what the judge thought both times. That this, this list. Albeit, I don't think it's perfect, does a very good job of filling in those gaps that were noticed by the judge and rightly so. Wasn't. This is much clearer in terms of what's needed. And the, the rationale for the choice of use type and what the conditions. Which part of the code should be. Fresh.
I think it's helpful that this mode is going to change now to be clearer about. Temporary RV stays versus permanent RV stays.
Yeah.
And I think this is, uh. The best way to move forward with the, the mess that's on one's hands. I think the director did a really good job by pulling in. I know code as a reference board. Temporary combination versus permanent combinations and comparing that to hotels, hostels and the ten sites. In the findings of fact, I think it's very clear that. Number one, rural zoning district allows her conditionally used permanent zoning parks. That is irrefutable. Yeah, what we personally like and want. Yeah, this was a fact in code. In, three saying the same thing. Four saying the same thing, referring, referencing the title fall three, three, three. The fire protection, five, finding the fact number five, the proposal needs required standards of B C R C twelve, three, 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 Mr. Um, we're, we're at the fire protection. We're doing the best that we can with tools that we have to say. Go to the local fire district. Write you a letter that says. The plan is okay with us or. The plan's okay if it has these changes. I think that is the very best that we can do for the fire situation. Uh, I think it's interesting that in this finding of fact, number five, something that then that was removed was the, um. Was it frogs and?
Frogs and.
Rocks and frogs.
Rocks.
May damage firefighting equipment, therefore other standards and systems are no longer really. Considered as assets to the fire. To the fire management because they're not well making. In such debris as rocks and falls. She makes sense. Now, if I'm ever a firefighter, I'm never tapping into a priority system. That doesn't make sense to do that. When I go to a good water source, otherwise you're just going to plug up your equipment. Now you've got no, nothing. So you kind of have to work with that when you're looking at someone's, they won't. I think the district needs to weigh in on this and not. Seven saying the same thing. So then the fire district, but the district indicated the phone target be held for one hour sufficient for fire protection. I don't know if that's really, I mean, that's a fact. The fire district did say that. In two thousand point three. Eleven is really important. Finding a pack number of eleven. For B C R C title twelve, three, 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 one, three, three, one. In the case of a question as to the inclusion or exclusion of a particular proposed use of specific use category. Planning director has the authority to make the final determination based on characteristics of the proposed operation. In this case. The director determined that the proposed fits, the proposed use fits in the category of RV park as defined in B C R C twelve, three, three, three. Commercial use day one does not fall under residential uses, recreational vehicle, recreational vehicle dwelling unit. So it's the director that makes that determination. Now that the director's done that, it's our job to interpret. The code as this is an RV park and not a recreational vehicle dwelling unit. Landscape, the landscape plan is shown, is reflected or mentioned in the findings of fact number twelve. Get tight in there along the road. Right. Support teams back to back, the type of an RV dwelling unit. In the most recent round litigation addressing the file, Marin County attempted to distinguish between RV dwelling units for recreational purposes and permanent RVs included within them. However, the court rejected ours. As such, we must conclude the code as currently drafted is not allowed for that distinction. As a consequence, only way to harmonize the two sections to impose a limitation of stay requirement. New RV parks, especially they cannot utilize for long-term residential use. But this is setting a precedent moving forward. The precedent won't matter much because hopefully. More commissioners will, and, and planning department will fix the code soon so that that won't come up again and be clarified. But this. Reconciliation of the discrepancy, I think it's a good one, dramatic one and. The right, in my opinion. Fifteen is the same thing, RV park. Sixteen, same thing. This is not long-term housing. Seventeen, the proposed use in RV park. Designed for the rental of three or more residential capable parking stalls or spaces. Again, we're talking about duration stay as the, how we threaten you here. To abide by the code, which does condition to permit this use and this is on. Without being ambiguous as to what kind of RV park. Eighteen, the guest log book. To be required. It's my opinion that this has, this is exactly zero burden on the applicant. Because everybody that. Stays there is not allowed farm, write down their. Their information for normal liability purposes.
Well, if you make a clear heading. In what, in what your stay and. And make it clear, you can only stay this many days.
So a little dog. Stay on cloud fourteen days. I don't think the guest log book is actually anything more than a normal, um, bookkeeping accounting system. Issue approval. Does anyone have comment on any, any deliberated in the finding of fact? One, two, the eight conditions. And address this problem that. But took it to the judge.
I think this is the major, one of the main sticking points for the applicant. We might, uh. Don't we consider any type of, I guess to me it seems this, this could be an undue burden. Probably can, can say this is the end game. Or not, but I do think it's worth. I, I also don't know that I see a different path forward. Uh, to commissioners. On this on, about how to move this forward. Will we have a situation with, with, without clear, uh, clear definitions? In place. But I do understand, I think, from a profitability standpoint, how that could be, yeah. Very detrimental. Or potentially detrimental. And on the other side, you have all the public testimony that we heard. You know. Concerns mainly about the number of. Of guests and people and I, and I think that's to be expected. I think I would feel the same way. Uh, you have a, a private property. Or, you know, these are private property and as a landowner, I want to be able to do what I, you know, what I need to do on my, on my property. Um, with, with respect to my neighbors. I want to be friendly, friendly with neighbors, but you also have your private property rights and we all want to be able to do what we need to do. So there's, there's two very, very good arguments there, but I. First, I don't see any other, any other way forward for the applicant. Based on the current situation that we have. Like including the, the other commissioner.
Yeah, can I, can I say something about that? Correct, correct me if I'm wrong. We, I, I, I hear everybody in this room. Is really not very happy with having an RV park right next as a neighbor. I, they're, they're, no one here is happy with that. And as we are a quasi judicial body, we have to follow what is already written in the comprehensive plan. And the finding of fact says the rural zoning district allows for RV parks. And it's within the rural district and it's currently is on rural five. Even though people were unhappy with it, I think that the. That this really needs to go back to maybe the, the. The use. The use of the, the, the way, the way the, the property use is written. I don't think, you know, I would say. Based on this. Can you, you can't deny it. Based, based on this, you're right. I mean.
You're conditional. Cannot be denied outright.
Be denied outright simply because.
It's a permitted use.
Cause it's written right here that you can do it.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think, you know, as, as a person, I think that's kind of wrong. And I think maybe that ought to be changed at some level. I don't think, you know, that's not our purview to do.
It's not within our toolset.
That's right.
Fortunately or unfortunately, you say, oh, which side of, of the argument you're on.
Right.
That is the situation we're in. And, and a great point. My dad says as a kid, the best way to ensure what happens on the lot next door is to purchase the lot next door. We had a lot as a kid and there was a little tiny little sliver right in front of our house. And somebody else bought it. My dad kicked himself for decades. Should have bought that and then they couldn't have built it in front of us and. It was a permitted use and that's the way it was. And that's fortunate and unfortunate depending on if you're the neighbor or you or us.
Yeah, all you can do is not be cavalier about allowing it. Yeah, all you can do is not be cavalier about allowing it. That's why it's conditional and not, there are permitted uses.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just, I just want to be sensitive to the fact that every, every neighbor here doesn't want that. I don't know. It would come out of their data come here too.
This, this body faces that.
A lot, I understand.
Great point.
It's a comment. It's not, this is not the.
So that's, this is A ten and A eleven. I think that we're discussing. To my earlier question, is there any other way that we can consider to move forward?
Right, because the
For the applicant.
Staff has provided a solution.
Right.
We could have a different solution.
Right. But then that needs to stand up as well. So this doesn't get amended back.
Right, right.
You don't want to make it. We don't want to do this all again.
Really, this is, you're solidating that it's temporary and trant. That's really what time to do and whatever you can do. And staff were smart to go to code, some existing codes. But take something out of there. So please, there's some precedent for it. It's not just arbitrary.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I've thought this whole meeting through trying to ask here out of something else besides that. Would be arbitrary.
Yeah, and Commissioner Molson had some great comments earlier on the same topic with that, and I missed it like as well. So I, I don't personally have any other ideas or ideas of way that I could do this.
It would, you know, would be who the applicants. If, if this is approved with A ten and eleven, would be who the applicant to appeal. That's what I would think. And you know, plenty of evidence to say there's six hundred conditions permits that are extremely similar. It didn't have the same burden, but this one happened to get appealed by people on a kind of rural. But we actually decided to go after the other RV parks. So, you know, like I like, we did. So that's something that, that really is outside of the purview of this commission. There are other, it's probably worth somebody doing something about it. Yeah, the, the resources, yeah. Is the time and money invested towards that?
Yeah.
And to the opposite side of that, if we don't like this particular use or a particular use as a community, we should be involved in changing.
You don't need to get me started.
Exactly, okay. Here we are.
Like, ju- just for, for the for the public's understanding, I, five years ago, I found, uh, a section of the code that was problematic for me in particular. And my business partner and I learned that you can submit an application for code amendment. We did. And it cost four hundred bucks. Which is a lot less money than hiring a lawyer and taking it to court for us. And the code changed and it makes more sense now. It's more consistent. And I did myself a favor and I guess I did the community a favor. Sheriff can do that. Uh, fire district can do that. Private citizens can do that. Uh, five, one, C threes can do that. And the code is not that hard to read and understand, like. I mean, it's easier than, than reading the King James Bible. And it's all like cross-referenced and so, I don't know. People need to like, well, solutions. Moving on to, uh, anybody want to talk about, we already got A conditions anymore? If you want the B conditions. Okay, B one. We are explicitly deferring to you who spoke is manage water. B two, again. The party to the appropriations, B three. Defer to the appropriate agency. Four. So where is the appropriate agency, B five? Yeah, if that storm art plan already exists, then it just has to be, you know, resubmitted or dropped off or emailed, sent back and forth to say, you got this right. I got it done. So since we're starting over from the beginning, it's necessary to check those boxes again. That's all. Yes, Director?
Mr. Bergkamp brought up a point. Um, it's a problem. So first, I don't want to verify, follow along. It was decided to strike or amend at least, uh, finding a fact number five. Is that what I, uh, you briefly touched on it? And when I wasn't sure where the commission wanted it.
I don't remember. No, it should be amended. I just noted that it changed between
in this application.
There was no proposal to it anyway. No, no, the only amendment was just some wording change to B five. Just like.
So, so finding a fact number five doesn't support adding a condition, B three for the fire sign off. What, finding a fact number five is from the deliberation by the board regarding this specific, uh, standard. So a lot of that came from their deliberation and there was a whole meeting held around the two ideas of the main focus of fire, adequate water for fire suppression and whether or not this is a residential use or a commercial use. So, so a lot of these findings of fact were, especially number five here, were pulled right from that deliberation. So if you disagree with that deliberation, given the new comments we got from the Spirit Lake Fire District, including the review of the previous files in the courts document, um, this needs to be amended or we need to struggle with the commission to be creative. But right now they don't, they can't.
Finding, finding a fact number five and condition B three cannot go in this. Okay, any second.
Okay, I presented that three hours ago.
Okay, I'm going to take a second, reread five.
And then that goes right along with four and seven. Seven can stand on its own, but four and five, I think, have some further deliberation.
Five and then seven, you said?
Four and five, four simply states the proposal meets the requirements. So then it, it would not lead towards a conclusion of law that already needs it, right? So if you don't believe it means that we do need a condition of approval, then we can craft a condition, probably revising seven. Um, talking about the, the new standard or sorry, the new comment from the Spirit Lake Fire District that needs to be addressed.
Okay, so I'm looking at four, five and seven.
And five came, sorry, I'm talking way too busy. So five came from a conversation with, uh, Debbie Carpenter, who was the Spirit Lake Fire Chief all the time. So she showed up at the meeting, she stood up there, a roster in here and there was a, a long dialogue back and forth with the, with the commissioners. That's where a lot of this information came from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they were saying that the proposal meets their fire standards in twelve, three, three, three. So, all three, three, three.
No, it's eight and twenty one specifically.
Yeah, so eight is what I, I, it's just adequate water for fire suppression. That's how you know it's not.
Hey. Fire supplies, drinking and fire suppression as well as approval of sewage disposal sites and methods by the health district. Okay. About that. There's nothing controversial about seven. It says that the proposals within fire district and the district wants twenty five, two hundred and fifty gallons per minute.
So one really seems to be above.
Where it comes from. So commissioners, when I look at four and five, it's the very end of five. It says, based on the capabilities of local fire district, the absence of enforceable state level RV parks, oppression statutes and limitations associated with onsite fire fire store systems, fire protection for the proposed RV park is adequate. I would drop that part and say, or really, I would, I would amend that part and say fire protection for the proposed RV park needs to be reviewed by the district. The fire district. Project needs to fit within the fire district's requirements for proper fire protection.
So we need and agree.
Yeah, so I would also, I mean, Matt Veach probably should pull the first sentence of five, okay, that out.
Yep, you're right. Well, then four does important. First sentence of five is just kind of saying four, I know. We could just drop four, we take that, raise more comfortable. So do we need to like? We can, we need to say clearly that we're not sure, we we're deferring the standards of twelve, one standard twelve, three, 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 fire suppression, active fire protection to the local district.
Correct. A review and approve.
Does that mean we just, you should just delete four and five altogether and then?
You could.
Well, being.
I don't need a word for word. What I need is a deliberate deliberation and I can capture their guesses.
Yeah, so like if we do, we delete three and four altogether or four and five altogether and then B three is what?
You, you need a finding to support the, the, or the, the condition of approval.
Okay, so you have to, there has to be a finding of fact that
But you need a finding of fact.
We need, we can just delete it. We need to reword it so that it fits with.
And again, I, I can work with it. I need an intent from the commission. So you can have something along the lines of the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District has provided a, an updated or new comment that reflects the, the relevance or the relevancy for a new review of this file. Um, given that a condition of approval has been added to address the concern of the fire district.
So I would say that we just amend four to say, no, twenty one. This four says that it meets the required standards of twelve, three, three, including eight and twenty one. We just want four to say twelve, two, two, three, no twenty one.
Okay, because A, red, like this fire well and so it's right. And that was just too broad.
Well, twenty one is about tree coverage.
Yeah, and then it says it needs to be four, so.
I, I would agree with.
Yeah.
It also, commissioners, refers to.
Okay, so in, so in five, we're going to say that in light of
light of the new comments from the fire district.
With five, do we risk? I, I know most of that is probably there because it's a super amended fact of us. So how much of that do we believe? Uh, to make sure that this is fairly solid in five. As we find with that.
Everything five kind of goes up to that last conclusion.
Right. Which is sort of redundant.
Maybe we need to go back and say, start over with five.
Feeling long enough. We're trying to prove a point of something.
Because of the circumstances of this project. Commission requires that the applicant needs to talk to the fire district about to get a letter from them saying, yeah, we approve this, this site plan, we approve this project as it is, or we would modify it to meet their.
So our intent is to ask the applicant to work with.
Our intent is to defer satisfying number eight to, not to defer, to delegate satisfying number eight to the fire district, correct?
Yeah, I have two harder questions for you that's about this.
Are you okay?
So we just draw our thought process. So we should drop seven in that case, right?
Seven?
No reason to keep seven around. I don't think you, it doesn't say anything.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah. That was from the twenty twenty three, five, yeah. I wouldn't, I don't. Not if you can do what you.
We don't have a specific indication from, well, the fire chief, because we don't have the fire chief.
Well, it seems like we're getting all kinds of, you know.
Well, there are previous opinions and then less important.
I'm tired of taking heat from the fire district.
Yeah, exactly. Cause it's pretty common.
It's like, oh, the people drive on our road so fast. Okay, talk to the chief, to the, to the, to the sheriff.
Right.
Oh, the fire, fire protection's no good. Okay, move to LA. Or, hey, pay higher taxes.
That didn't sound, that didn't work out very well this year.
Right, yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay, so we, do we have a, an agreement then to strike seven? Is that our intent?
That's, I would, I would, I don't think it happens. You've agreed on what to do with four, we've agreed, we've agreed, we said that we might drop seven. You said we might amend four to just mention part twenty one. And then we were still kind of floating five, what do you want five? And the commissioner said he had two hundred questions for us, so. I know the director said, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I had two hundred questions. So you have three conclusions a lot you have to meet to approve this project. The first one is that the proposed commercial use permit is or is not in conflict with policies the company is applying. You have a analysis by staff. So given the public testimony and the review of, of agency comments, if you find that the policies, that this proposal is in conflict with policies, that's a rationale for deny. You have conclusion two, which says that you're reviewing it against the code. So that's where you do a lot of standards. You look at parking, you look at lighting. So if you find any of those are inadequate, um, that's a reason for deny or add additional condition of approval.
Okay.
The, the third one is the harder one right now. I, the way I see it. The proposed use will or will not create a hazard or will or will not be dangerous to persons on or adjacent to the property. When reviewing these comments from agencies, we have D D Q and PhD providing you with a whole lot of detail about how sub-surface sewage may not be viable here. You have a specific comment from PhD saying the soils don't really perk for this type of, this type of proposed.
You have, they, they say that there's B two soils.
I, I'm just reading from their comment, right? I think they said that they looked at it and so that there's, there's one rationale of potential public health, health issue. Fish and game really doesn't give you anything. It says protect your garbage from bears, right? Then you have Spirit Lake Fire Districts. And, um, near the second paragraph, it says a full RV park poses a high risk for civilian rescue or even loss of life. You have a comment from Eric, which we talked about earlier, talking about how this is, uh, it creates additional, uh, concerns with emergency services and law enforcement response, given the density and all the other potential issues, right? So Mr. Berging was asking about that. So you have some very specific concerns by agencies on how this creates a public comment. So you need to, just given that it's, it is a conditional use that's allowed in this zone. It's not sufficient to meet the conclusions a lot that you have to meet to approve the project. So there is some rationale within the staff board and within the comments from the agencies that give you like some room for pause if you will. But I know we kind of brushed aside some of those, but they're very relevant when it comes to how to, how to craft your conclusion. Continue to deliberate.
That was one of the questions.
How, how do you, how do you take what they have and still make a conclusion that says you're not creating a hazard? That's what I want you to deliberate on. Okay, that's a tough, so like I said, it's
Yeah. I think we, we've gone through the fire, uh, and that seems to me to be probably one of the main ones was fire. I think I heard fire and a lot of, a lot of comments. There's been fires, six fires, I think, were, were the comments, number seven. That impact people out there. So I think fire is a big topic we should deliberate. I, I also had a follow-up question. We had one, um, woman had a great testimony. She said that she'd camped in hundreds, you know, for four decades and never seen an RV catch fire. I, I've camped a lot. I've never seen one catch fire. I did some researching. And, uh, I think cooking was the the number two cause of house fires or, or RV fires, if you will. And the number one was heating, heating, um, sources. And that would be during the winter was the highest prevalence of those, which this, uh, doesn't really fall under, if it's seasonal. So I think in my mind, from a fire perspective, it's highly unlikely. There are more people, more risk, more opportunity. There's, there's more propane there and so forth. So you can argue it from that standpoint as well. But it's not typically likely based on what I've, I've, I've seen and heard, even though the perceived risk I feel is very high for the public. Perceived risk, but there's
Perceived risk may, potentially.
Maybe from campfires, but not RVs catching fire.
So as a finding of fact, is, is it actually more dangerous or are we perceiving it more dangerous? This is the question I'm going to ask in my, in my mind. And then I did ask the applicant that, that exact question. Is there open fire? Um, I, I love fire. There's a fire. I'm playing in the fire and folks still, I'm looking at it. I camped out the last two nights. I like to camp. But it sounds like we have a, a mitigation plan. The fire's in the center. I haven't ever had a fire escape, a fire pit or a fire pan.
Go with your commentary. I don't know, perceived risk versus actual.
Exactly. Well, and, and we can only look at a little, a part of that risk. The other part of that risk of Spirit Lake Fire, that's there though. And given their capability.
Yeah, but I guess to argue the other side of the public's perceived risk, we do have the comment from Spirit Lake Fire District that says that full RV park poses a high risk. So it's not just the public.
So is that an actual risk or is that a perceived risk?
A risk to property?
What is the risk?
But, but a risk to life, you've got.
Yeah.
Twenty paths of egress. The space between every pair of RVs is a way to run out. This isn't like a courtyard inside of.
Right, all like that's where it's like walled off.
Right, okay. So people and dogs can get out of there quickly. Probably lose a bunch of stuff. And then, you know, once the fire truck get there, it's like you're. There's three sides. Fire trucks can pull up to two sides of that and get through. On the roads. On the interior roads.
Yeah, and there is some water on site, two wells, it sounds like, well, potentially, we're one currently, so there's, there's ten to sixty gallons and then I, I would assume the second well. Been producing as a first well, so.
But we don't have standards to go on for.
That's the problem.
And that's because it's not our job.
And we don't also have a clear definition of the risk. We have this great perceived risk, and I think we all acknowledge that. But we don't have. The data or any way to really support and quantify it. I like to quantify, what exactly is that risk? Uh, is it greater than or less than what I'm used to and, and so forth, so. I would defer to whatever they, the fire and fire chief. They're gonna have that knowledge.
Or, or the commissions, you know, chose to delegate to, to weigh in on this, yeah.
That, that body has experts.
Have resource that, that we have to tap.
And that's who we rely on when we call nine one one, right? They're, they're the experts. Eventually.
So what about other hazards aside from fire, if we're gonna leave fire? Like, the big comment was like. Traffic in those roads being.
No sidewalks, narrower.
Well, Road, Road and Bridge did not have a lot of negative to say, they basically said, we've got the impression permits, all good over here.
Yeah. Um, two entrances and exits, I think were, were noted by them as well. In their.
Yeah. We saw that a lot in one of their past letters as well.
Um, I, I don't know how you mitigate that. I, I picture myself staying there. And I think I would agree with a lot of the, the comments that we're giving in the public hearing. I'm not gonna stay there to recreate. If I'm in an RV, I'm just there so I can get somewhere else. Uh, so that would be traffic as a risk, because I'm gonna probably come in and out more than once a day. Um, maybe twice a day, I would think would be, twice a day, maybe if I forget my stuff or I came back for lunch or, or I got tired and spent the rest of the day there. So I think a risk would be traffic. I don't think I would be walking much based on my concerns out there. As a parent, I have kids that probably wouldn't say, hey, let's go for a walk right here, kids. You know, we would go out, go to the lake, or go to see the nature, go.
He would, but not everybody would.
But not everybody would, good point. Well, there.
There's nothing you can quantify about her on these stuff.
I don't know if we mitigated or.
How, how do you quantify any of this?
Well, and, and if, if our condition, you know, the condition that we would structure to, to handle any of these, is that. Is it, would that be an undue burden on this business that wouldn't be, or on this applicant that wouldn't be. Applied across the board to the neighborhood, the Scott Building, or that. On their.
And I'd love to have some kind of a standard that I could say, well, because of the safety factors, this, this, this is twelve spots, not twenty, but there is no, there is no standard, there's no quantification. Method, metric that we have.
Other than just, it says like. Yes, it will or will not, like, will it create an additional hazard or will it not? When, I don't think it's our job, if. It seems like if it will create an additional hazard, then that's a reason enough to deny it, like. I don't think we have to.
I don't think we've had any testimony from anybody that says it will create a hazard. Like an outbreak, yes, it will.
There's a lot of, we don't like.
Yes, or it could.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's gonna be more. It's change, we, none of us like change. There's gonna be more people, there's gonna be more. But an outright hazard, that's a. That's fishing with the alligators in the pond. I wonder, I wonder how they deal with it.
What about? You're young kids and you're new, then goes.
Noise and light and.
Got a green.
We had, we deliberated, are there any hazards related to those things?
There's code standards for it. We don't need to do any specific to the file for it.
Other hazards then specifically that we heard today? Those were the big ones, traffic fire.
We, we have, we have a way to delegate the worries about water and wastewater to P, Panhandle Health and Department of Home and Quality. We have a delegate to fire safeties. We don't really have. An agency to delegate to for general, like, crime, safety. Uh, people driving too fast, you know, the fact that there's a school bus stopped there and maybe there's some signs, that's not our job again, but. Slow down, there's kids in there in the RV park, right? I, I don't know.
So the, the sheriff, the sheriff's letter was brought up several times and there, there were some hazards in there. I think we've covered those.
You know, I, I, I wanna kind of bring this up, it's. It's, I, I'm fortunate or fortunately, whoever you wanna land. Um, the, his letter is full of these weasel words. Um. As it, as it may intensify, it may exacerbate. Um, or, and, and then some, somebody's gonna say it may not. Um. So there's. He, he wrote a, he wrote a nice letter to say that there might be some, uh, additional problems, but. There might not be.
Yeah, there's nothing definitive.
There's nothing to say that you can say as a, that I can say is, it's definite, that I think it's gonna be a nuisance probably.
So. I, I think that's a good comment.
Nuisance isn't, and.
Yeah, there's information that we don't have, and there's also, uh, from, from the sheriff. Um, and from a business standpoint. You know, I think about this, if I was in the applicant's position, I could run this as a high end place, you know, your, your prices. Uh, directly influence who stays with your clientele. You go to a hotel and it costs sixty bucks a night, that's a different, that's a different clientele than if you're paying a hundred and sixty bucks tonight. Different cars outside, different noise levels, different. So here we go, um, we don't have that information either, so it could go that way. Uh, it, it could be thirty bucks a night, we don't know, and that's not really in our, in our purview. Were there any other specific? Hazards that we didn't cover? I feel like we've covered the majority of those or all of those from the, from the sheriff's letter, have we not?
Talk all night about it.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're thorough, and I mean, I feel like we had a lot of engaging testimony tonight.
We did.
There was a lot of testimonies, you're here like.
Exactly.
Well, and one of the testimonies was all that specific to fact that we can act on and then opinion. Right? And, and that's the unfortunate part about this is. There are ways to change this that we won't get back to.
So then is this? Is this? CUP in conflict with the. Barn County Comprehensive Plan. What's the other?
Given the rest of it, we've done so many other RV parks, I, I don't see that it is in conflict.
In various different.
Yeah.
Zones.
No, a lot of those are.
Even ten.
R five, rec. And ten, so R five, R five, and rec. It seems to me that it is in.
I think that must be, uh.
Again, whether we like that, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the creature. Um, so conclusion number one, the proposed condition that it is or it's not in conflict with policies of Barn County. Confidence, and I can't, I can't prove that it's not. It is, as far as I can tell, um. It is not in conflict with. Conclusion two, the proposal was reviewed for compliance with criteria and standards set forth in. VCRC title twelve, twelve, uh, chapter two, subchapter two point two, condition of use permits. Chapter three, subchapter two point three, four. Four point nine, seven, environmental standards. Uh, we have added. We, we have conditions to cover where we aren't sure. Or where we think it is not compliant, it is, uh. We're not going to compliance until conditions are met. Included three, the proposal will or not create a hazard or. Will or not be dangerous to persons. On adjacent to the property. There's nothing specific to say that it will, and the areas that there are a pretty hazard. We. And, and that there are agencies to delegate to, we have delegated to them in. The conditions. Definitely, B conditions. We don't see anything we can do differently to this file. Do not. And just in findings of fact. Fully agree, we should strike note eight from the work. Five needs to say that. Say something different, basically that. The proposal. Would meet the standards of, well, if you just, you know, eight, if the Spirit Lake Fire District. Work for the applicants to ensure that it does. Have sufficient fire. Seven, we dropped. The general conditions, B conditions, now the B conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you cover four?
Uh, addition four.
Taking, uh.
Yeah, thinking.
Finding a backboard, finding a backboard, taking out, uh.
I think I've just summarized for the record. What we. What we've come to.
Uh, move. In short, also, I moved to approve this project file CUP zero zero three zero dash two one, requesting a conditional use permit for an RV park. Finding is not in conflict with policies of the Barn County Comprehensive Plan. And Barn County revised code has enumerated the following conclusions of law. Which is one, the proposed conditional use permit is not in conflict with policies. Of the Barn County Comprehensive Plan. Conclusion two, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with the criteria and standards set forth at VCRC title twelve, chapter two, subchapter two point two, initial use permits. Chapter three, subchapter three point three. Chapter four, development standards. Subchapter four point nine, standard for specific uses, and chapter seven, environmental standards, that was found to be in compliance. Conclusion three, the proposed use will not create a hazard or will not be dangerous to persons on or adjacent to the property. The decision based upon evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, was prepared. And testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt findings of fact and conclusions of laws set forth in the staff report or as amended during the hearing. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have chairman sign to transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking out private property.
We have a motion in a second. I'd make a motion to amend. We should do five. As discussed. We submitted. We're in control, and be prepared by now, a licensed engineer. I'll be submitted. To the Barn County Engineering Department. And amendments to the findings of fact, as discussed. On them, this day one. Motion to amend. We should create a second amendment.
Second amendment.
We've got a motion, a second, an amendment, a second. Commissioner now vote from my left, please, on motion and.
I'm gonna have to vote no. Uh, based on last paragraph of Sheriff LeWish's letter. Saying that the health, welfare and safety of visitors in our resident state or living in and around RV parks is far better served. By placing these facilities in zones with close proximity to emergency, emergency services.
And for the record, your name, Commissioner?
Mr. Clark, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Marley.
Commissioner Blader, yes.
Commissioner Molsen, nine.
Okay, so we've got four voting in favor and one test, and we're shooting first. It's nine forty two. Number one. The staff have any reminders up to here now, Commissioner Republic?
Thank you.
No.
Wow, that's a push.
Let's say correct.
Right. So our next meeting, is it on the seventeenth of this month?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this hearing is. Adjourned until the. April seventh.